All right, good evening, everybody. Cold evening at that.
Wet.
Um, sorry we don't have the heat warmers on and your seat warmers on. Uh, but I would like to call this meeting to order on January twenty first, two thousand and twenty-five, the School Board of Manatee County. Um, I'm gonna go to Ms. Spray for our reading of the district vision.
Thank you Chair. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive.
And um, I'm gonna, we should do invocation first and then bring in the color guard.
Okay.
I think it's a little bit.
Out of order.
Yeah, so we'll go invocation next. I don't know if.
Okay, my, I do not seem, uh, Pastor Stevens from Saint Mary's Missionary Baptist from parish. I'm imagining it could be traffic-related, so I will defer to Mr. Tatum if he would be so gracious to do so.
Sure. You guys will rise.
Please rise.
In invocation, and then we'll bring in the color guard and do the pledge after as well.
Let us pray. Lord, we are gathered here this evening under your grace to do many things to celebrate great members of our school system and our community. We are also gathered here today to discuss expenditures of the hard-earned money of the taxpayers, and we are also here tonight to make decisions about personnel within our school system. So, Lord, we just ask that your blessing be upon all of us this evening for our heads and our hearts and our minds and our spirits as we go forth and make these decisions, that we can have dialogues that are frank and honest with civility. So may the Lord blessing keep us, may he make his face shine upon us, and may he bring us prosperity and peace. God bless us, and God bless this greatest country on God's green earth, the United States of America. Amen.
Amen.
All right, it's the MHS Georgia T will come on in. There Commander Ashley Cholet, Cadet Brian Bernaby, Cadet Jocelyn Navas, and Cadet Abigail Freyas. Arm, time, march. Present, arm. You'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the free, sane, honest, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arm. Right, face. Thank you, maybe see this. All right, that brings us to item number six, which is the approval of the agenda. Uh, the chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five agenda, updated January seventeen, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. We have a motion to approve the agenda items.
To move.
So we have a motion in a second? Did y'all do that in grace?
I am.
Oh, sorry.
But I don't have any options.
Did you sign out inside back here?
Yeah, I'm going to now.
We had a motion by Ms. Spray, second by Mr. Kennedy. We'll just. Or got it. Go ahead. Oh, there it is. There we go. And that passes five to zero. Uh, moving on to item number seven, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Weisong.
Good evening, Chair Choat and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four School Board Workshop, as well as the minutes from the December ten, two thousand and twenty-four School Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any minute fixes now from the board? All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the minutes for December tenth workshop, December tenth School Board Meeting. That passes five to zero. All right, next item is student celebrations, recognitions. Mr. Barber, come on down for our Sunshine State Scholars. A lot of hats is on, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Board Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Weisong. Been a good setup here. You know, it's always great to start the board meeting with the color guards here, and uh, it's, I get the pleasure of watching them get here early and getting set up and, and doing their walkthroughs and everything, so uh, like I said, it's, it's just special to do that. And then to follow that with, uh, you know, student celebrations and then celebrating some of our, uh, employees, uh, that, that makes the, uh, School Board meetings to me, you know, very special. So, uh, tonight, we've got two amazing, uh, recognitions. I think you'll be extremely impressed by the students that we have here and the people that are here to speak on their behalf. So the first person I want to introduce is Erin Chapman. She's our Coordinator of Instructional Projects. So Erin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I am here because I get to introduce these wonderful Sunshine State Scholars, uh, but I want to give you a little bit of information about the program and what it is. The Sunshine State Scholars Program was created in two thousand and eleven to encourage Florida's strongest science, technology, engineering, and math students to attend one of Florida's post-secondary institutions and hopefully to continue into careers in STEM within the state of Florida. Each district can select a designated number of eleventh-grade students who represent dedication to and excitement for a variety of STEM fields. Manatee County selected two scholars and one alternate to represent our district at the Sunshine State Scholars Symposium this April. At the Symposium, our student representatives will have a variety of networking opportunities to educate their decisions about post-secondary options and career pathways. College and university representatives from around the state, as well as notable employers from the STEM sector, will present research and innovations while educating students about future opportunities. Students will also work with their peers to develop solutions to real-world problems currently impacting our state. So I'm gonna hand it over to our high school representatives who are gonna introduce our scholars.
Hi, my name is Jenny McNally, and I'm a math teacher at Brayden River High School. I'm here to support Tina. Um, Tina is an exceptional combination of determination, drive, curiosity, and heart. She has excelled in all of her coursework while asking thought-provoking questions, helping her peers, and brightening all of our days. She has plans to work in the medical field and has already been involved in medical research. I know her dedication, keen mind, and kind heart will lead her to be a strong advocate for the practice of humanitarian science for the people. I'm so excited for what she has in store for the future, and I'm proud that she's part of the Pirate Nation.
Good evening. I'm Tina Ding. As long as I could held a pen in my hand, the pursuit of knowledge is something that I've been very dedicated to. The fact that I have the privilege to be able to pursue what I want and quench my thirst for education through academic schooling is something I'm very grateful for. Thus, through the recognition of this award, I'm glad that I have the ability to stay in school for as long as I can and further my education. Um, with this award, excuse me, I plan on getting my undergraduate degree and hopefully, and hopefully, attend graduate school where I get my PhD and medical school for my MD. Thank you so much.
Ginger Collins, Principal Southeast High School, it is my honor to recognize Malicia, a truly remarkable young woman whose dedication achievements have set a standard for excellence for other students at Southeast High School. Malicia not only excels in her rigorous IB coursework, but embraces all challenges with resilience and grace. She represents the essence of what STEM is all about. Malicia, we are so very proud of you and cannot wait to see the impact you make in STEM and the medical field as you pursue your dreams of becoming a neurosurgeon.
Hello, I'm Malicia, and I, first of all, want to thank God for this great opportunity and great recognition that he has allowed me to have, and I want to thank my parents because they have always been my support and have shown me that unconditional love, and without them, I wouldn't be here today. I also want to thank, uh, thank the school district of Manatee County and all of the teachers and staff that have worked with me and have supported me along my journey and my education. I feel like the programs that are offered in this county are so great, and the connections that you can establish here are amazing as well. I love the clubs that I'm allowed to work on with, um, do, and pursue all the STEM-related activities I can do at my school, and I'm so excited to also pursue my education here in the state of Florida and, uh, pursue a career in neurosurgery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did we, did we record that? Make sure we recorded that for, for marketing? Turn off, turn off, we're allowed to use that.
Good evening, Dustin Dolquist, I'm the principal at Lakewood Ranch High School, and I'm going to introduce Julia Ventramini. Uh, every day, students like Julia inspire us. Um, I'm sure that would be echoed by the educators up here. They make our jobs so much worth, so worth it, and so much better, and so much easier. Uh, but I had the pleasure of, of having Julia come down to the office when I informed her that, that you all had invited, invited her down here, and I looked at her academic record, and I'm just shocked. I mean, she's taken six AP classes in our Anatomy and Physiology Honors class, which would, which is like a college-level class, and I'm sure all of these students are, are taking that same level. So we heard, I heard the word dedication, and you have to be dedicated in order to take that level of classes, especially at Lakewood Ranch High School. And so I'm, I also heard from Julia, she, she is going to make nationals in FCC LA, and, uh, her and her sister have a project about the importance of civics education in our schools. So I look forward to hearing more about that project, and I'm going to introduce Julia.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julia Ventramini. Thank you, Mr. Dolquist, for the wonderful introduction, and first of all, um, I would just like to thank everyone that's here, um, the superintendent, and, um, the state of Florida for allowing me to have this opportunity to allow me to thrive academically, not only in the STEM field, but with all the electives my school has offered. Um, my future plans is to major in economics and hopefully go to graduate school and become an actuary because I really like that kind of risk-taking side, and knowing that, um, the people around me had the, um, faith to nominate me is just a perfect example of a risk that I'd be willing to take in the future for others. So I would just like to, once again, thank everyone here, thank my parents, especially thank Mr. Dolquist for taking me here, and, um, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. They're only juniors. It's amazing they're gonna be around for another year. We're very, uh, you know, happy about that, uh, but these are three of the top, uh, STEM students in the state, uh, for, that are juniors, so it's great to have them. I also want to make sure that you know that Tiffany Spradling, Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, is here, uh, so. So, um, we'd like to get a picture with the school board in the background.
And I believe we do have some parents, do we have parents here? Should we get all the parents in?
Yeah.
Come on, parents.
Can we get all the parents in? Like, like.
Yeah. Parents.
Come on, parents. And I'll be posting, uh, these on social media this evening. Julia, get in there, Julia, get in there, get in there.
We always have to wait for Kevin to get this.
Yeah. Wait on Kevin.
All right, uh, I love these evenings when we get to celebrate students, and then we get to celebrate employees, and this is a very, uh, special recognition. It's, uh, uh, it's in coordination with National School Counseling Week, which is February third through seventh this year, and, uh, we have two, uh, employees from our district that are statewide, uh, nominees. Uh, the first is Cassandra Cassie, uh, I'm sorry.
Diadio.
Diadio, Diadio, uh, from Rogers Garden-Bullock Elementary, and I'm gonna ask Principal Michael Escorcia to come say some words.
All right, just put my glasses on, okay? Okay, um, it is my honor to have Ms. Diadio be part of our school community. Um, in the two years that she has been at Rogers, she's changed the way our students and staff treat each other. They are more self-aware and able to manage emotions, which you know that ages very hard for the staff, too. Um, and behaviors in a safe and respectful way. They also continue to develop positive relationships with each other, with staff, and, and have an understanding of empathy for others. Ms. Diadio has taught everyone at our school how to be kind to each other, and that they have the power to make good choices so that they will grow in their educational journey and make any goals they want for the future. That's what she does, and she does this to everybody that she encounters. I just want to say congratulations for this amazing and well-deserved honor.
Good evening, everyone. And Dr. Weisong, good evening. I am so honored and excited to represent school counselors in Manatee County and school counselors across the state of Florida. Uh, my mission is to continue to, um, advocate for our professional identity with the goal that eighty percent of School Counselors Day is spent dedicated to providing direct services to our students, services that are vital for academic development, social growth, and the development of lifelong learners that are globally competitive. Every student deserves access to a comprehensive school counseling program. I am deeply grateful to my current and past administrators, Mr. Escorcia and Ms. Bench, for recognizing the transformative impact of such programs. When students have access to well-implemented school counseling programs throughout their educational journey, we see measurable results, improved academic performance, mitigated behavioral challenges, and increased graduation rates. With the unwavering support of my administrators, we have achieved the highest recognition in school counseling, the RAMP designation for our program, first time ever in Manatee County. And, oh. Our goal is to position Manatee County School Counselors as leaders in Florida by securing additional RAMP designation this upcoming year. Together, we are setting the standard for excellence in school counseling programs. Thank you for your time and your dedication to support our students and, of course, our school counselors in our district. Thank you.
Again, Cassie Diadio is the Florida School Counselor of the Year, uh, named by the Florida School Counselor Association. Next, we have Larissa Bennett, uh, District Coordinator of School Counseling, and she received the School Counselor Advocate District Leader Award at the Florida School Counselor Association Conference in November. And here to say a few words about her is Dr. Lori Breslin, Executive Director of Student Support and Family Engagement.
Good evening. It is my honor to introduce Larissa Bennett, um, in recognition of this award she has received, to give you a few facts about, uh, Larissa. She's been an employee in the district for twenty-three years and a school counselor for seventeen of those years. The past five years, she's been doing tremendous work in the district office. She currently serves on the FC, FSCA Board of Directors to support school counselors across the entire state. In two thousand and seventeen, she was recognized as the Florida School Counselor of the Year, which puts Manatee County as one of four districts in the state to have two or more School Counselor of the Year recognitions. The other districts are Broward, Duval, and Palm Beach, which are quite large districts, so we believe statistically that makes us number one. Larissa is a constant support to staff and students, and, um, it's an honor to be able to work and see, um, what she's able to achieve for our district.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Dr. Weisong. Um, I stand here and I'm an empath, true and true, so, um, I get emotional every time I hear Cassie and the work that she's done, because the work that I have done as a school counselor, I had to leave my students to take a job at the district, and that was a hard shift for me. But being able to advocate for people like Cassie to do the work that they're doing for our students makes me really emotional, and I'm so proud to work with a whole host of school counselors in our district. To be an advocate, um, in school counseling is a hard, is a hard task. In the state of Florida, it makes it even harder for us because we are a little bit behind the times. All of you probably went to school with guidance counselors. In two thousand and thirteen, the state changed our language to school counselors, and that was to catch up with the fact that our roles changed significantly in the nineties. No longer are we just academic advisors, but school counselors work to meet the social, behavioral, academic, and post-secondary needs of our students, and as you know, our students need us more than ever. So it's been an honor to continue to support our counselors like Cassie. National School Counseling Week is coming, so if you know a school counselor or you want to stop by a school and say happy National School Counseling Week, it's their week to celebrate what they do on behalf of our students, and we continue our work to create school counseling programs in our schools so that all of our students can access what they're accessing as Cassie is. We have a lot of work to do, our counselors have a lot of extra responsibilities, and we're working to create programs that allow them to be able to do their work. So thank you very much. I'm honored that my colleagues recognize me, but more importantly, I am super excited for Cassie to be our Florida School Counselor of the Year.
I, I believe our superintendent has a comment.
Good evening, Board Members. Um, I, I just want to, uh, note that, uh, it's very rare to have the State Counselor of the Year and the State Supervisor of the Year from the same district. I, I had an opportunity to, um, sneak out of here the day, uh, that, uh, these awards were announced up in Tampa and made it, uh, just in time to hear the announcement and, and celebrate with Cassie and Larissa, and, um, uh, it was, yeah, it did not go unnoticed by the crowd that, um, Manatee had won both of these distinctions, and, um, uh, to see the, the respect, uh, that both of these women have with their colleagues around the state, uh, was, uh, was, uh, really special. Um, when I, uh, arrived in Manatee, um, uh, Ms. Bennett was one of the first people that I really heard about, uh, and I heard that she was wearing about four hats at the same time, right? And, uh, uh, talked with, um, my team, and we decided that we really wanted her to just get to focus on school counseling services, and, um, uh, I know that our, our, our counseling teams are, are getting stronger every week because of that, and, uh, we, uh, we appreciate, uh, Ms. Bennett. She's also been leading the effort on, um, uh, our Portrait of a Graduate work, uh, that I know the chairman had an opportunity to participate in last summer, and that work continues to evolve, and, um, uh, I believe it will be a, a, a centerpiece of our next strategic plan, um, as we roll it out to more community stakeholders, and so, um, appreciate, uh, Ms. Bennett for all your leadership in the district. Um, I first met Cassie, uh, I believe last February, um, I made a trip to Rogers Garden because she had sent me, uh, notes from two Rogers Garden second graders, um, who wrote to me, uh, during Kindness Week, and I wanted to meet them, and so, um, Cassie, uh, made that happen, and, uh, when I went up to her office, which is, um, o- office isn't really the right word, it's a, it's a welcoming place, and you walk in that room and, and you know that, that, um, that, uh, you're, you're in for, for something special. I know Vice Chair Spray, you got to, um, uh, visit that room as well, and, and, and you just know walking in, even, even before, uh, someone meets you, um, the, um, uh, the work that you put into your job, and, uh, it's, uh, a really remarkable opportunity for the students at Rogers Garden. So, uh, thank you both, um, for, for your leadership and what you do every day to take care of kids in this district.
Uh, great things happening in the district.
Yeah.
Employees to students, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Barber, I love starting meetings off with, with our recognition and celebrations of our students and our staff. All right, moving on to item number nine, public comment. We do have one public comment, general public comment, um, and that is Joe Roberts. So if you want to come on down, uh, screen above you will show the three-minute clock, and you're good to go.
Okay. I want to thank the Board, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to come in here and speak tonight about an injustice that I am seeing in this district. My name's Joe Roberts, I'm recently retired after thirty-five years in this district. I was a teacher, as, uh, principal, or assistant principal at the middle school level, and a, uh, administrator at the ESE Department, uh, with the county office. I've got a good grasp on how the district works internally. Dr. Skip Willhoyt, who I'm before, uh, who will come before you later on this evening, is dedicated twenty-six years of his life to the Manatee County School System. I know Skip is a teacher, is a coach, uh, as a worker at the county office for safe and drug-free schools, dropout prevention, uh, he has put on countless trainings, he has facilitated numerous committees. His work on the Code of Conduct Committee is legendary. It's the best committee I've ever been on in my life. He's worked on CHAMPs, he's worked on, uh, he is basically the face of the anti-bully movement in Manatee County. He mans the bully hotline, he, uh, has given hundreds of presentations to elementary school students. Who among us has a letter from a student that says you saved their life? Dr. Willhoyt's got one of those. I could go on, five oh four procedures for discipline, this work on the CHAMPs program, it's endless. He has dedicated his life to this district. The injustice that I am here to talk to you about tonight is the targeted intimidation that he has had from our superintendent. Ever since, of all things, he had an interview. He has an interview to, to advance his position in the district. He gets the job. Go on, go on the, uh, HR portal, sign in, you've got the job, congratulations. He goes in, he accepts the position. It's not approved by the superintendent. He interviewed, if the job gets reposted, he interviews again, and I will leave it at that, right there, but I hope you dig in and find out what happened to him. It's unacceptable what happened to him in that interview process, it's pathetic what happened to him in that interview process. And that was the catalyst. When he reapplied for that position, that was the catalyst for this superintendent to use targeted intimidation against him. What did he do? What? What happened? Removed from his Code of Conduct Committee that was the best I've ever been on? Gone, out of that. Responsibilities? Gone, taken away from them. So, what happens? He gets assigned to schools to help with truancy and attendance. Okay, he goes there, he embraces that. Something happens at a school, and he's escorting a student to the office, and he is attacked by this student. Gets broken up, CPS is called. They come in, they do an investigation. Nothing to see here. Our district sends Dr. Willhoyt home for four months on paid leave. Isolated, at home. Can't speak to anybody. Calls in every day to some number. Nobody picks up the phone. Nobody tells him, "This is the way we treat a 26-year veteran in this district?" That brings us here tonight. I want to talk to you about communication. And I'm almost over, but this superintendent is leading through fear and intimidation. It shuts communication down. 10 or 15 people I've talked to, principals, assistant principals, wanted to come up here and talk about Dr. Willhoyt tonight, but they couldn't. I am asking you to really take your time and look at this situation. This is, you're talking about his livelihood, his quality of life. He has put too much into this district to be thrown away like a piece of trash on the side of the road. It's terrible what has happened to him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our general public comment for the evening. We'll move to item number 10, Reports and Presentations. I know it's a graduation rate initiatives and 23-24 data. Dr. Weisong, you wanted to introduce this item as we get the tables prepared.
Thank you, Chairman. We're excited to make this presentation to you this evening, reporting the results of the graduation rate for the class of 2024. Those who were on the Board may remember that at the end of my first 100 days here, I made a presentation regarding the entry plan and a series of observations about potential next steps. And at the top of the academic services list was work on our graduation rate. I was trained for this work in a district where the graduation rate was an indicator of the overall health of the organization. And the graduation rate is measured in grades 9 through 12, but it's really a reflection of how the entire system operates. And so, we've been working on this for some time. And there was an announcement last week, and very positive news. A lot of hard, deliberate work and positive outcomes. And so, we celebrated briefly and then got right back to it because although we've made good progress, we have further to travel. I want to thank the individuals that you're going to hear from tonight. They have been involved in leading the effort, and there are others as well, but they represent the group. And so, Ms. Scarborough became our Executive Director for secondary schools last February and has done very targeted work supporting each high school principal in realigning systems to make progress. Dr. Breslin, in her role as Executive Director for Student Supports and Family Engagement, realigning systems in those departments to be sure that we're taking advantage of the latest research-based practices and program options for students. And then Lisa Lyon joined us last summer as Interim Director for Student Services and has a history of working with schools on grad rate. And the Board members, the three who were here at the time, may remember. I called you and said, "I've got an opportunity to pick up talent", and we don't know exactly where that all fits yet, but we will figure it out. And then, we needed a Director for Student Services, and Mrs. Lyon dropped right in and has been working really student by student. And she'll talk about some of that work tonight. And then, representing our high school principal corps is Ginger Collins, Principal at Southeast. Southeast had the largest gain in grad rate, and so, she's going to talk about some of the specific practices that are underway to get that work going. Again, there are lots of others, both at the district level and the school level contributing. And of course, Mr. Jensen leads this team as Deputy Superintendent. And then, our Director of Research and Accountability, Evan McCarthy, is also in the audience and always gives us lots of interesting ways to slice and dice the data so that we can better serve students. So, excited to turn it over to the panel and share both the progress we've made and our next steps so that we can serve students even better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weisong, and thank you, Board members, for having us tonight. We're excited to present this information to you. And so, without further delay, we will head right into the presentation. And so, first, we're giving you the snapshot of where we are for our graduation rate, giving you this view of what we've accomplished here in the district over the past three years. So, on January 9th of this year, that should say January 9th, 2025. I've already caught my first mistake here. The Florida Department of Education released graduation data that confirmed the graduation rate rose from 82.3% in '22-'23 to 85.7% in '23-'24. This confirmed what, of course, Evan McCarthy and his team had already told us because they're running the data constantly and gave us every indication that this would be where we would land. We're going to dive into what this number means and how each school did. And as Dr. Weisong pointed out, hear from our principal, who is boots-on-the-ground, doing the work with the teachers and the students.
Well, we wanted to start with some common language. So, here's some terms that we're going to be using tonight. The first one is a cohort. So, we are talking about the 2024 cohort. And what that means is they started ninth grade four years ago. And then, we'll also be talking about dropouts. And a dropout is a student's been withdrawn for a number of reasons, but they are not continuing on with their education. And that's very different than a non-grad. So, you would think a dropout and a non-grad are the same thing, but they are very different. A non-grad would be a student who is continuing on into some other type of education. They could be moving on to a GED or into adult education, or maybe they're looking at a fifth year of school. So, for example, ESE students, they're allowed to go to school up until they're 22, but the state still expects us to graduate them within those four years of when they started ninth grade. And then, lastly on here, we have a transfer. And transfer is really important because that would be a student who is enrolled at Southeast High School, leaves Southeast, and then enrolls at Manatee High School. Or same thing outside of the county, outside of the state. So, those are students that are coming in and out of our schools. They impact our graduation rate. So, we're talking specifically about the number that we are accountable for, that graduation percentage. We're looking at all of the students who graduated with a standard diploma within their cohort year or even before. So, we're looking back to when they started ninth grade and expecting them to graduate those four years later. So, there's adjustments made to this cohort. So, students, let's say they moved to Florida, moved to Manatee County in 10th grade. That student now becomes part of the cohort. So, they're now the numerator and the denominator. And the same way, say a student is in 11th grade, and they moved to Polk County. So, that student would come out of the cohort from Manatee County. And once they enroll in Polk County, they would be absorbed into that cohort. And then, lastly, each student gets a classification as a graduate, a dropout, or a non-graduate based on the coding that's entered for that student.
So, your next chart shows our historical graduation rate.
Hold on one second. I'm sorry. Would you all like, let the presentation go, and then ask questions, or ask questions as the presentation goes?
We can certainly answer questions as we go, whatever the Board prefers.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Chad.
Because I do have one, too, on the...
On the ESE question? Is that where you're going? Okay. So, Lisa, you just said that an ESE student can stay until they're 22 years old? Like, until their 22nd birthday or through their...
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, I was just curious. It's not that important.
If they turn 22 on August 20th?
I'd be happy to answer that question. I'd be happy to answer it. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I'd be happy to answer it. The year of their 22nd birthday would be their last year is what our district has typically done.
Oh, the school year in which they turn 22?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, when the state publishes these numbers, obviously, generally, this is a massive generalization. So, take it for what it's worth. But generally speaking, ESE students are going to have a harder time to graduate in four years. So, does the state... I mean, I know they're not including that percentage of ESE students into our graduation rate, but even when it's reported out, along with this graduation rate data, do they report each district's percentage of ESE students? Because some districts in Florida don't really have that many ESE students, which naturally is going to benefit their graduation rate.
Potentially, it could. And you're probably thinking the fifth-year graduates, a lot of time, are our students in our IND units, who typically stay with us through those years. They are considered a non-graduate. Well, if they're going for a standard diploma type of a thing. But yes, they're a non-grad if they choose that. They're counted as a non-graduate.
Okay. But that's a perfect example. You know, a district that has a large IND population, that's naturally going to hamper their graduation rate by the state. So, I guess my question is, is there any accounting for that ESE population when they publish graduation rates?
So, we do have a deferred diploma. So, one of the diploma options we're able to award students that may be on access points would be a standard diploma that they would get on their fourth year, like, when they meet graduation requirements. But then, they're allowed to continue on until they're 22 if they meet requirements for certain programming. So, we also have students that are on a traditional program with an IEP that graduate on time. Very often, in fact, I don't know the numbers right off the top of my head, but they are also increasing along with our general education graduation rates. They're included within that.
Right.
Oh, so those numbers are, you can separate, the state separates them out for another column, so to speak?
Correct.
Yeah. Thanks, Chad. Thanks, Lisa.
Ms. Ray, did you have a question?
Yeah. Okay, just to tell on that. So, you're saying an ESE student gets basically a modified diploma. Correct?
So, the state offers multiple options for diplomas.
Right.
So, not just an ESE student. We have, I don't know, eight or 10 different diploma options we can offer students.
Okay, but this graduation rate that we're looking at today, that includes any type of diploma the state issued?
A standard diploma, yes.
A standard diploma?
Yes.
Versus an ESE diploma? Or whatever categorical that they would put that graduate in, correct?
Correct. That would be all standard diplomas.
All standard? Okay. Define standard, then.
I can give you the specific codes if you would like, but it's going to take a few minutes.
No, that's all right. I've looked at the DOE website, and there are a number of types of diplomas. So, my question is in this 85.7. I'm not going to rip our record to shreds here, but of that percentage, do we know how many ESE graduates there were in that?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but assessment can pull those numbers.
Okay.
We do have that data that we could provide if the Board wishes to review that data. Absolutely.
And it is included in our 85.7?
Yeah, and so, we have it broken down, you know, by all subgroups, as the state does. They do provide that data by district as well. And in saying, you know, you don't look across the state and see districts at 100% because there are always various reasons why a student may not graduate in the four years. I mean, yes, it's a number that we hope to rise to the highest level, but we also, as a school district, work to meet the needs of each individual student. And 100% may not graduate in four years. Yes, we do get knocked down off that 100% because of that. But if the end result, that student earns their degree, and it might take them a little longer, then that still is a celebration. It's just not going to be captured here in that number.
And no.
And that's why you don't see 100% in school districts. You just don't.
So, this number could include a student that took five years?
So, it could, right? Because we don't, it was published just this year. We could have a student that didn't graduate last year that's still working on requirements towards graduation, whether they be a student with disability or just a student that is still trying to master their assessments. They may still be working on it. And we do have paths for students who are still working towards a diploma and trying to meet some requirements. And then, we don't later get that quote-unquote credit. They're not going to go back and add that into our graduation rate, but still important for that student, of course, to earn that degree.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks.
So, my question was, as we were talking about transfers and students, obviously, moving from a district school to a district school is one thing, right? If a student has been three years in another district, name it, doesn't matter, in-state, out-state, whatever, and they come here into their fourth year, their senior year here, Manatee County, and they're already behind, we are now going to be subject to that requirement, whether they make it or not. I don't care if they're ESE or not, whatever. That goes on our record of whether they graduated or not. And we only get them for X amount of months, you know, at that one year, let's say.
Correct.
Okay. And so, and I only say that because obviously, we're in an area of growth. So, we have families moving from other places, right? Standards may not be the same. We have migrant families. We have immigrant. I mean, you don't know where... So, I guess my real question is, and I don't know if this is going to be something that Evan's going to have to work on or not. There's another task right now. Like, do we have that data broken down? And maybe we do in this presentation later on. But like, do we have a broken down of like, out of this 80, this percentage, you know, X amount of percent was in Manatee County schools all four years? The ones that missed, you know, these 9%, only were here for a year? Like, do we have capability of breaking that down to see? It just being, I mean, not that the state's going to say, "Oh, then you don't have to worry about those", but I just, I think it'd be interesting to see how much are we having to replace from what they may have lost or maybe never were given and maybe never got that chance to learn, et cetera?
Right.
What's the recovery?
Right. And I don't want to speak for Mr. McCarthy's work, but he absolutely could pull that information together if that's something the Board would like to see. And I know that our principals, and you'll hear from Mrs. Collins here shortly, I mean, they go through every senior on their sheet. If they did not graduate, they know why. And so, that work is done. So, I'm imagining the principals could go to their spreadsheet and tell you, "Well, that student came in in August of their senior year, severely credit deficient", and they have that information. Because we do try everything we can to still have that student reach their goal of graduation. And so, they need to know that information, which is why we really look at data as a whole. But if we don't bring it down to each individual student level, as she'll get into, then you're not able to make the gains that you see happening at Southeast and some of our other high schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, I'll just add that Mr. McCarthy pulled that data at my request on the class of 23. And the data showed that, yes, some of our non-graduates are recent arrivals to the district. But we also have non-graduates who are with us four years, right? Which tells you that you have work to do. And some of that influenced some of the programming decisions we've made. We haven't run that data on the recent group, but certainly can.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Feld?
I just wanted to point out also that having sat in that classroom myself with those kids that... Remember, as we go through the year and we hear feedback on our testing, the same thing holds true there. Students that we may have not have had in our class quarter one, we now have them quarter two. They could have come from Michigan, but now, we are now responsible for their testing scores as well. So, this is across the board. It's not just high school. It affects your scores starting off with the earliest times we do testing in elementary school. So, this is... So this is something that we always have in our mix as we go forward as teachers and as, as schools and the district. And so I, I know it does affect things, but for, for me, looking at the big picture, it's not really that much of an effect. Because as the superintendent said, we have kids that have been with us since kindergarten who are still not able to graduate. So while it is, I think, interesting to see the numbers, I don't think it really has that much bearing on our results.
Thank you.
So I'm going to speak to our next graph that we have. So in looking at each cohort year, sometimes the requirements are different. So just wanted to point out, you can see our 23, 24 year, and that's where we have our number of graduates, non-grads, and dropouts. And you can see the, the increase we had in population as well. And a lot of that could have been that post-COVID time, not that we ever want to talk about it all the time, but this was the year of those kids that were freshmen during 20, when we sent everybody home for a little bit. So that's, that was in there. But in 1920 and 2021, both of those years of graduation and graduation rates, the state assessment was waived. So while students had to have their credits and had to have their GPA, they did not have any state assessments in order to receive their diploma. So the last year that was really similar in terms of what the requirements were was 18, 19. So you can see our increase in our number of grads in that range. So just something to give you some perspective as we're looking at our rates. And then the next state comparison shows again the years with the state assessment and where we are achieving and closing that gap with the state. And you can see where the state was achieving, where we were achieving. And as we continue to close that gap between where the state is at and where we are at. And that was one of the challenges, having been a, very recently, a high school principal, where those students that we went to spring break and then we didn't come back. And then we came back the next fall. We had several different modalities. But any of those students who started with us are in our cohort. And if we don't know where they may have gone, they could have been counted for us as a dropout. Because we don't have them transferring somewhere else, as Ms. Lyon talked about, or in another school. So then they're a dropout. So when we sent students home, if they didn't come back, this is that graduating class. So we're very proud of the students that we did find to get them across the stage.
That's really interesting what you just said. I didn't know that. So if a student left, either during COVID or anytime?
Correct.
And we, as a school district, don't capture where they're going?
If they move and they don't tell us where they went, or maybe they went to work and found another path, that's a dropout. So that's some of the hard work that our principals and our staffs did, was trying to find those students and bring them back to graduate. So that part, I'm really proud of our schools because that was a lot of hard work of finding. Because many of them did go and work for the family, or they had to relocate based on things that occurred at that time. This is that class.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Gray?
When a, when a student leaves, say, Christmas break, good example, they're gone. We come back to class and they're nowhere to be found. They could have moved or whatever. How long does it take maybe the school that they went to ask for records and get records? Because that would give us, because they, okay, they transferred. But what percentage do you think of students don't ask for records?
I don't think I could guess to that. We could potentially look at that. Usually our records between schools is pretty quick because a lot of it is electronic. If they do register at another school, they'll reach out and we're able to do that proper withdrawal code.
Pretty fast?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just a matter of coding them from one district to another?
Correct. So that, but then count for that district. So say they here and then they moved up to Tallahassee. Once we get those records, they are withdrawn and they become part of that cohort of that school.
Okay. And part of their graduation rate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And vice versa. Okay.
Can I just add to that? So when there's records request, that's wonderful. But sometimes there's not records request because the child has not gone anywhere.
Right.
So we've added some systems. We've built some new systems this year to make sure that we're catching those students that they have been withdrawn or withdrawn themselves and haven't showed up anywhere else. So that we can get them connected to their next place, be it back to their high school or back to some, another option that we have here.
So our district reaches out to that student that didn't show up?
Yes.
Whether it's a phone call or?
Probably multiple times.
Right.
Many different ways.
If you would find.
Might even be a knock on the door.
Right. I was going to say that. Even going to their residence. Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. So our next chart is, shows all of our schools and our changes over time of percentages. And as you can see, all of our schools made a, a jump this year. I do want to point out, while Lakewood Ranch and Parish stayed very consistent, as we spoke about earlier, once you get above that 95 into that 97 range, that last percentage are those students, like you spoke about, Mr. Cho, who show up senior year and don't have all the credits, who may have been a deferred diploma. So once you get into those numbers, we want to stick with those consistent numbers. So credit to them for the students that they maintained that high level. And then you can see each school as they increased, which was really fantastic for them.
Question, Ms. Scarborough. Actually, related more to the last slide, but potentially this one too. So did I understand correctly that if a student drops out of high school and then we don't know where they went, that they, we have to count them kind of in our records? So apparently there's not a, a rule that says, look, if a child doesn't show up for school for 30 days, they've essentially, they're considered to be withdrawn. They just stay on the books until, until somehow we track them down or something?
That's correct. And then they're a dropout for us if we don't locate where they are.
So they could show up halfway through their freshman year, drop out at Christmas or their freshman year. We never hear from them, see, and some, and then we have to carry them all the way and they count as a, as a what? As a?
Dropout.
A dropout.
Yes, sir.
And that counts against our grad rate, is that right? There must be somebody up there, there must be, is there, like, well, the reason for that is, have you ever heard of it? I mean, you've been around the game long enough, you know?
That's where we have teams at our school that try and find where those students are. Whether they, they call their house, knock on a door, find an aunt and uncle, somebody to get some kind of tracking of where they are. So we can find an end result of, did they enroll somewhere? Were they successful? Did they go private school? Did they, you know, move? Or, or did they choose to go a GED? And even a GED is considered a, a non-grad for us, even though they did get their general education diploma.
I mean, there's probably somebody sitting in the Office of High School Graduation Rate calculation at DOE, right? And somebody wrote a rule and it said, the student drops out and you never hear from them again, you still have to count them. Like, somebody called that person and said, this is a crazy rule. Why? I mean, I, I know I'm being a little facetious, but it's so bizarre. And I've been around bureaucracies long enough to know that, well, there probably is a reason, right? It seems like a ridiculous rule, but somebody wrote it because at one time in the past, there was a reason. Maybe, for instance, it forces you all to try and track them down. And so the state doesn't want to let you off the hook and like, well, we'll force them to track. But any thought on, they ever heard, you ever?
I think exactly what you say. The, the reason is we don't, that all of our kids count. From the day they start till the day they're done, they all count. And, and we don't want them to get lost along the way. So if we can find them and get them on a path, and it may not be graduating from us, but it could be getting them in a different opportunity, then that's part of it. You know, we can't forget those kids that may have had something happen. I think it's to make sure that we do keep track of every kid along the way and give them the best opportunity.
You would think after a semester or six months, like, we have not, we've tried, we've called, we emailed, went to their previous residents. At, after 108 days, you are now allowed to drop this person from the roles of your school system. Anyway, we're going up to Tallahassee, right, to talk to people. I might have to bring that one up. The second.
By all means.
Yeah, the second question I have, and I think I had another one too. It was about graduation rates. I'll, I'll, it'll come up again. I'm sorry.
Can I tell on?
With regards to, just to, to tail on to what Mr. Tatum said, the district does have dropout prevention specialists at most of our schools. And I was wondering if you could give me an idea of what the number of those persons are and about what their caseloads are.
So I, I think to, to touch on that, it's a little bit broader. So we do have graduation enhancement texts, we call them GETS, from elementary. A lot of our title schools and secondary will have it, but not everyone. But it really is a shared responsibility. We do bring in the work of our school counselors, our social workers. Our school leaders are heavily involved in the process. So that when you do take, because when you're talking about the size of a high school and looking at, because the work doesn't start the senior year, you're looking at student performance ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And then figuring out how to target your at-risk students who might be showing deficiency in credit, GPA, or attendance. And then breaking those students up into manageable pieces to give to your school team. So really, the entire team then comes into play to try to do outreach for those students. And then when the school teams need extra support, the social workers at the district level can help do some of the knocking on the door and those types of, of things to try to reengage the student and their family. Traditional high school isn't working. We do have other options and having those conversations. So it really is, we would not have been able to see the over three-point gain had the whole teams not, not been engaged in the process. Because it's a, it's a, it's a large number to, to reengage some of the students.
Did you have your thought?
I remember my question. So of all the reports, hundreds of them that we send up to the FL DOE, I'm surprised there's not like a statewide, or maybe there is, but statewide student database where if, you know, Johnny Jones withdraws or just leaves Manatee County, but he shows up in, I don't know, Broward County, that we can ping the database and go, oh, yeah, he's over there. Does such a thing exist? Or does it?
That is part of our teamwork with our data collection between our reporting, with our state reporting. That is part of the work that our schools do and our registrars and our student information system. They do review student by student to make sure we have the accurate codes with what the state may have to see. Did we have a student register that somewhere fell through those cracks? So that's part of that fine-tooth comb that we do with our students. So, yes, sir.
What I'm saying is, can, let's say Johnny Smith withdraws or just leaves and we don't hear from him. And can we put his name into a database or his, whatever, student, some, some type of identification and go, oh, yeah, he's over there in Broward County? Like, is there a, you would think that there would be a state database like, for this type of reason, with all the reports. But apparently such a thing does not exist. You know, this.
So there is a file that we can review once a year.
Once a year.
So we take a look at those students. We look for those children. But, I mean, the name of the game is looking for children here.
Right.
So we are always looking to find where our children are. When, when we can hand them off nicely with a records request or something else, then we can rest easy. But I'm sure all the principals will tell you, it's the ones that we don't know where they went that keep us up at night. And we look for these children in many different ways and many different levels. And one of those places is the state file that we see annually.
Okay, great.
Okay. To.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Student doesn't show up for how long? Till the end of the school year? You have to keep that record open till the end of the school year till you can code them as dropout?
We have, we have a truancy process that we follow for our students that goes along with our attendance policies.
Right.
So if the student is just not attending any longer?
That's different than, than you're trying to find a student?
Well, it's actually pretty similar.
Okay.
When they stop showing up for, you know, Ms. Miss Conns can speak more specifically to it. But when they stop coming for an amount of time, it's when we start worrying about them.
Right. They've been gone for two weeks, a month now. You, you've not been able, you've reached out. At what point, you go to the landlord, oh, they moved out a month ago. Can you code them as a dropout then or a, well, withdrawn from your district? That's the hypothetical, I guess I, I'm looking for is.
You can, but they still count as a, as a dropout for you until you change the code of where they may have then re-enrolled or re-engaged.
And you wait to the end of the year to do that?
We could do it, we, we're looking at it all the time.
Want to, okay. And say they show up, you can go back in and change the record, they're back in attendance?
We would re-enroll them. Yep. We would re-enroll, or we would change the code that now they transferred somewhere else.
All right.
So we could accurately depict where they are.
Because they may have left here, couldn't find housing for a month, lived with somebody, may not even got registered at a school yet because they didn't know where they're going to go. So, all right, that, all right, that helps me understand.
Yeah, they're not, once they withdraw and dropout, they're done. If we can reengage them, we can change their code and bring them back in. Absolutely.
Perfect.
But if you never find them, they count, right?
As a dropout.
And it counts against our graduation rate.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so some of the contributions to growth, and Dr. Weisong spoke about this when we talked about realigning some of our systems. Systems. So we focused on, of course, clarity, clarity and consistency, alignment and student-focused initiatives. Within that, really, the heartbeat of all of this work takes place with our teachers, the work that our teachers do and our school leaders, our principals, assistant principals, and all that support staff that I was mentioning. They are the heart of all of this work. Our job in district teams is to support them. And we do that by having clear expectations and communications, our alignment of resources, which we support. You see written in the SDMC strategic plan. And then our student-focused initiatives is if everything we're doing has that student focus and we believe will positively impact students, whether it be graduation rate, learning, college career readiness. If we stay on that focus, then we'll support what we believe is the heartbeat of our organization. And a little more detail, and we spoke about this earlier, is really looking at a plan for every student. So our assessment team, which is vital, Evan McCarthy and his team, to give us accurate data sheets to monitor individual progress towards graduation. And I know that Student Services Director Lyon and our principals rely on this and they have a systematic way to review it repeatedly throughout the year. And they'll talk about that as well. Of course, our assessment schedules and how we really look how can students achieve. I mean, Evan and his team, Evan McCarthy and his team, go through student success on each time we give any sort of assessment. And if it's not meeting students' needs, then we have conversations about what we could do better, either in preparing the students for it or offering a different type of assessment. Of course, multiple diploma options, individual student and family engagement, really helping families understand. And there's been a lot more outreach to families and trying to reengage their students in some sort of path towards a diploma. Professional learning, we've increased professional learning, both with all student needs, but especially with students with disabilities and our ELL students. And we've seen growth in both areas for the 23, 24 graduation rates. Recruitment and retention of highly effective teachers, again, that's your heartbeat. That is, research shows it. That is your strongest, strongest effect on student achievement. And monitoring of credit recover opportunities and learning outside of the traditional high school schedule. And Mrs. Scarborough will speak a little bit more about that. We're really looking into students, the traditional day is not working for them. What else can we offer them? And we've created additional pathways within our own district with contracted with a charter site to really meet individual student needs. So to speak to that in concert with Ms. Lyon, we do monthly data monitoring on our, with our schools, with where their data is. Those files you talked about with each individual student, who's on track, who's not on track, what can we do individually for those? And each of the schools have a team with doing that and pulling together with what our best objective is for that student. Graduation tracker, we can already monitoring, obviously, this year for next year's graduation rate. We can see where we are and we're already closing gaps there. We're really excited even about this next class and what we're able to do. And we're looking at increased opportunities for credit recovery. All of you know that high school's been about the same for many, many years, but maybe our society has changed a little bit. So we're looking outside of the box thinking. We have some of our students who may need to work and they may need different hours to go to school. So we've been piloting a program at Bay Shore High and as well as some smaller venues at our other high schools and meeting with the high school principals of, okay, do we need to adjust and the student come in this period and work certain periods or work after hours based on their schedule? And contracting with some of our teachers to work those different hours to better facilitate our students and what they need. You know, the 7:30 to 2:30 day may not work for every student. We may need to look at things differently. So we've tried to be very creative while still giving them that full academic experience of what they're doing. And so, and Lisa, you can talk to that a little bit as well as some of the alternative systems that we have.
Quick question from. Yeah, Sharon, if you could, could you talk about what's going on at Bay Shore? How long it's been going on? What their schedule? That's a really exciting idea.
Yeah, so it is exciting. We're excited about it. And so this, this year, we started that at Bay Shore. So what they're actually doing, and Mr. Cooper speaks to it as like kind of a Chinese menu, so to speak, where I'm going to pick one from this column and one from this column, like a smorgasbord, you know? So they get each student individually and see what they need. And they have contracted beyond a longer day. So they go into like an eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th grade.
a an eighth, ninth period of the day, even sometimes tenth. So a student may come in fourth period, and then they stay through that ninth period. Or maybe they're coming to us credit deficient from somewhere else. And so they're there the full day, but then additional two, three hours afterward for the periods that they need. So it's individualized to each student with that. They've got teachers that are staying or either working those extra hours or working an additional period that they'll do that. And we're doing similarly at other high schools. We've initiated some of those um at our high schools in second semester where they'll take those classes that they need to go into that. And we're reporting what periods they're there, but it's just a different day. Um that is more successful. And and we did this at Bay Shore. We brought in some of the students individually and what do we need to do and just gave them, I think, at the end of the day, hope. Um they see that if they see too many things they have to reach, they may drop out or give up because they don't think they're going to get there. So we're able to meet with them individually and give them hope of like, here is your path. You do these things, and this is where you'll be able to get at the end of the year. And it has brought in quite a few students as well. So it's been very exciting. It's just this year, we started it in the fall. We we launched it second quarter.
And how many kids roughly are taking advantage of?
Oh, I'd have to check.
It's okay.
Specifically, I can get that for you.
No, that's okay. Um chat if I may. Um Laura, you know that for many years, I've been banging the drum for start school later. Um and that, you know, all that adolescent brain science about the changes their brain is going through, and that's and that's why they have to, that's why their sleep cycle changes. It's not that they're lazy and they're sleeping all day. It's because they need their biological clock. Maybe that's not the right term, but their circadian rhythm is changing.
There you go.
And so, yeah. But uh that's, I mean, to have the opportunity to come in.
Well, for some of them, they work. They may work.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so that's some of that is their their when their job is, or they have to care for younger children or something like that. So we've just tried to be looking at and some of them need a longer day or more periods where they can be engaged.
The I'm sorry, I mean, does cut you off. Um do they have to have a mitigating reason to switch their daily schedule, or they can just choose it on their own?
They do. Um we are looking at this more for our students that are that credit deficient that we're trying to get them before we expand it. That's why we're piloting it, because you don't want to just go in so full force and not really vet it to make sure that is the the right pathway for them. So that's why we started at one place, just with some of this, to see how it how it grows.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure if you throw the all the kids at Bay Shore High, like, you have five hundred kids, like, yeah, I want to come in at ten AM, not seven-thirty. Um yeah, so I got to take.
Yeah, we're very specific with with where that's at and and what it is.
No, it's it's a huge step in the right direction. That's really exciting to hear about. Thank you. Thanks, Sharon.
Well, really, just to add to that, I think we've said it multiple times today, and we'll keep saying it, is we have to look at the individual child. We have to look for that one specific student and make sure that what we're offering them is something that they're able to receive. So instead of building programming and saying this has to work for all of our children, we look at each individual child and say, how can we work this out? How can we meet your needs and still keep our rigorous standards so that they can meet the requirements that are necessary to graduate?
Mrs. Collins, if you would share some of your huge success that you've seen at Southeast?
So the work has been very rewarding for all the high schools. I can speak to Southeast's success, but I want to also congratulate all of my high school colleagues who have done an amazing job with the graduation rate. First of all, we never underestimate the power of the public school teacher. Uh the human side of these numbers that you see, in fact, is that every student at Southeast has an advocate on campus who sees in the student what they sometimes can't see in themselves. Um having advocates is very important. I have one teacher who just showed up tonight. She is my dropout prevention teacher, and she came because she wanted to see if there's anything she can add to her PGP plan for the year so that she can grow as a teacher, even though she's a huge part of this plot chart going all the way up to eighty-nine percent, which is so exciting for us. Secondly, different pathways. So according to my student principal leadership group, who are my seniors that I call in to get advice from, um I spoke to them when the press release came out, and I said, what do you think the difference is? You've been here for four years. You've seen this arrow go up. What's the difference? And twenty-twenty-five senior David told me, Ms. Collins, the messaging is the same. From one teacher to the school counselor to the graduation coach, the same for me and my friends. We're going to graduate. The pathway may be different, but the diploma is the same. So the adults on campus let students know that there are many pathways. If it's extended day, tassel-bound program, remediation with core teachers, or eighteen credit option, we will put each student on the best path for him or herself. And then third, um the testing, Florida's still one of six states that requires the reading and algebra test to graduate. And so we have prioritized the opportunities for concordant scores from CLT to SAT to ACT to fast retakes. All classes for seniors have the dates posted so that the students can see, and it's visible to all students. Uh one teacher even has a signature wall so that when a senior gets the score, they sign their name. And when that happens, a senior sees another senior's name and says, if he can do it, she can do it, I can do it as well. So overall, that's the message to every Southeast Seminole. You can too. Our systems are in place for future cohorts, and we expect to only go up from here.
That's awesome.
Can I just say, go Knowles?
As always.
As always.
Go Knowles.
Did you have a question again, or were you just not off?
Um, no, I'm I'm still on, but I I have.
I do.
Um Ginger, if you could, you had an acronym in there. I don't know. The CLT?
CLT is the Classical Learning Test. It's another way to get a concordant score.
Concordant score. Okay, I just didn't know that one.
It's a new one.
Um, yeah, I'm I'm new. I got new things to learn. I'm back. Um, Ginger, real quick, I'm on this. I'm on this graph right here.
Yes.
If um I think there's a really like important data point on here.
Yep.
Anytime we look at data, whether it's assessment or graduation rate, I think it's important that we look at not just did Manatee County go up or down, but it's important, like, what is the state doing? So for example, like, um I'll do the whole district. Top line, um graduation rate on the chart is eighty-six percent. That's a in a one year, that's a four percent bump, positive four percent. Um the state average in the same time period is one point seven percent. So we are outpacing the state of Florida. So I I think that's really important context. And then when you think of that, the state went up one point seven percent, and Southeast High went up twelve percent. That's just really amazing work.
We had a long way to grow, I will tell you. So when you see the amazing also, because I want to point out Parrish, my child is a senior at Parrish, an early grad, who the school counselor gave him his own pathway. So I want to congratulate all schools. But um yes, we we had a long way to grow at Southeast High School, dropping in the seventies. Um, you know, again, after COVID, and I don't want to bring that up, but I do, because we had to find those children. We had to look for them. And some of them, it doesn't take the fifteen days that we can withdraw a child, but it still hurts us as a dropout. Um it can be a year, it can be two years before we finally make contact. And we did bring students back to school to graduate. If they're on my campus with my teachers, they're going to graduate. It's when we don't know where they are and getting them back to school or back to the best path for them. And I will tell you, we were at eighty-nine point six. We ended up at eighty-nine point two with this date because one child they had marked as a graduate was not. But that child did go and get their GED. So even though they didn't count as a graduate for me, that child made a difference in their life. So looking at these numbers, I know the board meeting, you really look at the data. I also want you to see the human side of this from a school principal's viewpoint, because we look at that child, no matter how it impacts our numbers, and um really finding those kids and bringing them back on campus is where you see that growth.
Great. Thank you. Really good work.
Relationships. Great lead-in. From the first time I toured Southeast, when I first got there, way, what, two years ago, you was telling me about a student that was having a difficult time, was ready to drop out, and you just kept saying to them, nope, you're going to graduate, you're going to graduate. And anytime I visited the campus after that, I tried to make it a point to remember to see him, you're going to graduate, you're going to graduate. And it is about just that one touch point might make a difference. And that was the student I kept looking for at the graduation for twenty-two, twenty-three is when that was. And he graduated. So it's not just about the data. It is about the student. And I, when I saw the numbers come out, I'm like, yep, I can see how Southeast has made such a drastic change. And I get the COVID, but just from my first year there to my second year there, just the attitude in staff and students, the relationship between staff and students is is way different. So I think you're doing great things there. I want to personally congratulate you. And yeah, go Knowles. And it could be the turf too. You got a new turf, the whole new outlook. All of it is going up. Uh I'm just saying, something like that can make a difference in in the attitude of a student. You know, that football player is going to say, I can get to that end zone. I can get to that, you know, make that touchdown because that one thing made them motivated them more. So I just want to say congratulations to you and all of your staff, because that's what helped, I think, propel our numbers. I mean, we all did good, but that one twelve points is a huge uh uptick in our overall data. So I just want to say thank you.
Ms. Ginger?
Ms. Collins, congratulations. Excellent. And all of you, really, but you get the number on your chart there, man. So and your staff, whoever that is.
So there.
So if you could address something for me real quick, this actually, the these numbers, when they came out publicly, seemed to circulate through the community pretty quickly. And and I got kind of a cynical text message from someone, and they said, well, all you got to do is inflate those grades. That's really easy. And I thought, that's kind of cynical. But could you address that? And just to help the some people, at least in the community, that might be having thinking along those lines that, well, the reason we did so well is we just inflate grades. We, I don't think that that's true, but help us understand what some of the things that what what would you what would you tell the public, let's put it that way, if someone came to you and said, well, Ms. Collins, you just inflated your kids' grades and you made that happen? I mean, how would you address the the public in that way?
I would tell them that neighboring districts um are having celebrations for their schools that have made these gains. So I'm waiting for the celebration. But of course, I'm willing to take the heat and and talk about any criticism like that. Um GPA is just one piece of graduation. So there's no way to inflate um quick fix, whatever that criticism may be. There is no one way to fix that or else every school would be at a hundred percent graduation. So that is hard work. You see the numbers. I see the faces. Um and then I could show you absolutely how they made those gains.
And plus, they have to pass the English test and the math test.
There's many requirements.
There's lots of checks and balances there.
Absolutely.
So thanks for addressing that. I don't want to take away in any way, shape, or form your accomplishment. I just, if one person texted to me, I'm sure there might be others in the community that are thinking that. And that's just absolutely not the case. You, the staff, the members of the school system, and all these uh high school employees have have made this happen in a fair and just way. And they should all be congratulated for their efforts. So thanks for taking a moment to address that.
And student grit. If I don't talk about student grit, um I will tell you, my students at Southeast are tough. I had a, uh you know that I came from middle school as a principal. And so when I went to Southeast High School, my eighth graders followed me. And one of my young ladies lost her brother, who was a senior at Southeast, um this summer that she was to become a freshman at Southeast. She started her first semester in ninth grade with a zero point zero GPA. She failed every course. She had all A's and B's in middle school. Because I knew her and because I could keep track of her, um she is going to be an early grad. She's our goalie for soccer, and she's doing amazing things because we would not let her fail. So my student grit at Southeast High School is very, very strong. And so that's the reason, along with the advocating for our students, along with the um making sure they have hope in their testing, and also the different pathways so that they all earn the diploma, but maybe a little bit different way. Um that's the reason that we made those gains.
Thank you. And Ms. Felton?
Having worked with Ginger at Southeast High School, I was a teacher there for six years. I worked with Ms. Spencer, who's hiding out in the back, uh and did, she's shushing me, um and and did dropout prevention with her after school one day a week for for a semester and worked with those kids myself. Um and having taught juniors and seniors and having to drag them across the finish line to graduation, anybody who says that they're inflating their numbers needs to to maybe take a step back and pay a little bit of attention to how hard the staff works and how hard, as Mrs. Collins said, how hard those kids work. They work so hard. Um I had juniors and seniors who still, at the end of their high school career, had not passed state testing so that they could walk. They had everything else, but they didn't have that state testing. And every day, we did test prep for SAT and ACT so that they could pass one of those tests. And then to stand there and to be able to tell them, guess what? You passed the test. And to have them burst into tears and fall on you and cry on your shoulder because they are so happy that they are literally crying, having passed this stupid, stupid test, stupid test, so that they could walk, although they did everything else. That is incredible as both a teacher, as a staff person, um anybody who has worked with kids to see that is incredible. And anyone who, you know, come see me. I'll tell you all about it. Anybody who has complaints and doesn't know, because I have seen them do it, and it's amazing. And I am so proud of every single kid at Southeast High School and all of our schools for their hard work in in doing this, because that is absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
And Bay Shore was plus nine, too. I mean, you did great. Second place. That was Bay Shore. So that was great, too.
Thank you. And um Lisa Lyon will go through um what we're doing to continue. Success builds success. So we're, as Mrs. Scarborough said earlier, we're not done. Uh we've worked really hard already this fall and and hope to come back to you this time next year with even um stronger numbers as we continue um to refine what we do for every student.
Right. So we're continuing our work. And some of the things that we have in place and plans moving forward, um we're not just monitoring the senior cohort. We're not just looking at those seniors right now. We're looking at all four years all the time. So that's one of the big things that we've implemented is really looking at our freshmen. Our freshmen now have a GPA. So we can see which ones are in trouble and which ones are on track. So if we can start early interventions in ninth grade and get those kids corrected and back on track, then we're going to have less less work to do their senior year. They might be more willing to stay engaged throughout their high school. So looking at all four cohorts is very important. And I I really believe that it starts with the transition from eighth grade into ninth grade. So I was previously a middle school assistant principal, and I can tell you, in sixth grade, who was going to have a hard time in ninth grade. So we want to make sure that those conversations are happening between our eighth grade administrators and support staff to our ninth grade teams receiving those students to make sure that their schedule is on point and they have someone that they're connected to before they even set foot on that campus, to set them up for success from day one or day negative one. Um we're looking at summer programming for those students and then maintaining that monitoring for those freshmen throughout the entire school year. Um we are growing our Zello program in elementary and in secondary schools. Uh this is our collaging career um platform that we are using. Uh if we can help students see that an education is is benefiting them for their life and not just what they're doing in the moment, we can get more buy-in on what they're doing, more participation, better programming for those students so they can get what they need. We're going to continue to review concordant score opportunities. We work very closely with our assessment department. Um and our concordant scores change. Um next year, I think we have some different tests that we'll be able to use. Um so staying up with those and making sure that students have every opportunity to meet those concordant requirements. We're utilizing branching minds in the MTSS process to fill those academic needs uh for our students. And again, looking at each individual student throughout their whole time in high school, but also all the way back into kindergarten, making sure this is just the culminating event that high school gets. But this is really about our students' education from the moment they start with us. Um we're making sure that our students have access to credit recovery coursework, um so not waiting until their senior year. If they need it sooner than that, we want to make sure that students have access to to uh course correct and then get right back on track and into their programming. And then, of course, we talked about our alternative scheduling opportunities and our extended day programming. And uh we are continuing to meet with our schools. So we meet very regularly with our schools and we review our tracking sheets. We look at ways to support our our students throughout the school year based on what's going on at that time.
Thank you. Did you have?
I just need to stand corrected that Horizons actually took second place with eleven percent.
Yeah.
And then we have, I mean, they have everybody did well.
Horizons, that's awesome.
But there we go. I stand corrected. All right, that's it.
Before before we let you go, just a couple of things real quick. I'd say, number one, um that is into this slide right here. I'd say number one, um, that is in this slide right here, that extended day alternative scheduling opportunities. I know we just, we're just piloting it, we're just doing it, right? Um, but we're seeing, um, charter schools come in and different with these different avenues and things like that and be successful. And and this is something I do think that we have to start, um, rethinking education. And so kudos to the staff to be able to say, hey, look, this is something we need. Um, and it's not for every child, right? It's not good for every student. Um, and like Mr. Kennedy said, I don't think it's for anybody to just say, I don't want to wake up at seven thirty.
Right.
Give me a ten. I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the way that we do it. But I think given that option for students that really do need it, um, is extremely important. And and I'll say as it as a, and I know we're not necessarily probably doing this now because we're still piloting it, um, but probably for next year. This is a, this potentially could be a choice component, right? Like, hey, I'm at Parish High School, but I really need to do this or whatever. They don't offer this alternative schooling. Can I choice to Bay Shore because this is what, you know, to be able to move myself forward or family reasons or whatever, right? So I think this is something that that, um, uh, is extremely exciting for in the future. And I want to say this for for a second. Um, Ms. Felton, you know, brought up the the help helping after school and and doing a part of that. And and I just want to say, um, the success teams that are there, and I'm sure Ms. Collins can kudo this, but, um, as a coach, um, and there's other coaches in the room and past coaches. Um, they make a huge difference in in the students' lives athletically, put it on one thing. But you gotta have the right GPA to play. You gotta have the right GPA to to be in in your your bands, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so I don't know if they get as much credit, um, as as they are, but we monitored kids. We 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 sat on on hot summer days and and made sure they were on FLVS or whatever, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and so, um, you know, I think that's that's still part of the success team, right?
Yes.
There's a lot of individuals, there's a lot of people, but I want to give the the kudos to to our coaches, to our extracurricular people out there that, because they're pushing these these kids, no doubt. And, um, and I don't think sometimes, you know, we just think, oh, that's just a basketball coach, just a football coach or soccer coach, whatever. But, um, but they're pushing kids and they're changing kids' lives. So I, I, numbers are great and, um, like, like they're sending the best of the world to the moon, right? Like, that's what we want to do, right? To the moon. So anybody else, I don't see anyone else lit up to speak.
Other than, to your point, the cynical person, I'll bet that person hasn't been, hasn't walked a school hall and. Because I've, I've probably the same persons that have been, yeah, I would almost say, um, and that's what I would say to the public. If you haven't walked the halls or read to a student or coached a student. In at forever and some that have commented, I don't even have children. So that's the truth. Um, go to a school one day a week or once, one month, one day a month even, and see, these are kids. Um, just like the, uh, good news moments here. Those kids are going to be our future brain surgeons. You know, seriously, think about that. When I was just astonished. I mean, we just did this thing this week with, uh, well, we'll, I'll talk about it in more comments, but this is what we invest our dollars in. And this is how we cultivate our community because a lot of people never leave Florida. They end up being our professionals here in our county and our state. So, yeah, I'd say to the cynicals to go walk a school sometime. Anyway.
Remember that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
We are hour and a half in, so we're going to take our mandatory bathroom break. There we go. We're back. We're back. All right, um, thank you for obliging me in that recess. So item number, uh, moving on to item number, uh, eleven, consent items. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for the January twenty first, two thousand twenty five school board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Doesn't matter.
Uh, so we got a motion and a second.
Are you grandis? Did you do the mock?
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go.
Oh, wow, I'm way, I'm back on the minutes.
Yeah, all you have to do is hit motion.
Yeah, I think you just got the bottom if you hit motion.
There you go.
All right, so we got our motion and second in the grandicus.
Thank you, Laura.
So let's go ahead and vote. On these consent items. And that passes five to zero. I, real quickly, I just want everybody to know, and I know Dr. Wyson will bring this up and maybe other board members. Uh, but before we move on to new business, you know, consent items typically pass things that are in large, um, quantities, things like that. But I want everybody to know that, um, in that consent agenda right there, um, as a board, we sat here and talked about millage and safety is going to be a part of that, et cetera. Um, and we've, we've expanded our safety in this district, uh, by purchasing the the new, uh, evolved systems, more evolved systems for middle schools. So, um, we absolutely, that's what we set out to do. The voters passed that for us, um, and we made sure that that it happened. Um, and and to keep our kids and our faculty as safe as possible, um, is an utmost goal for the district. So I just want, I don't want that to go by too quick as we, as we move forward through the meeting. So thank you to the voters, uh, thank you, staff, thank you for board. We approved, uh, more safety for our students. So moving on, item number fourteen, new business, non-consent items. Um, item number one, approval of budget amendments for November twenty twenty four. Uh, superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the budget amendments for November two thousand twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second. Uh, Ms. Sellers?
Hi, yes.
It's yours?
I got it. Let's just go ahead, Heather, for a second.
I I can hear you, but I don't know if the volume is absolutely on, but.
Okay, all right. Well, the month of November, uh, the, for the district, we had four hundred and sixty eight budget amendments. That was related to approximately twenty two hundred chart strings. And out of that, four of those chart strings were over one million dollars. These were all related, uh, to, um, transactions in the general fund. Uh, they, uh, they were related to recognizing the revenues and expenses of the education development grant for the MTC hangar. And there was also movement between the, uh, reserve budget for the AP and ACE. And we, those were pushed out to the schools.
Thank you. I know you you went over those with us at the, at our board briefings. Uh, I don't see any questions, uh, for the amendments for November twenty twenty four. We have a motion, a second. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendments for November twenty twenty four. And that passes five to zero. Item number two, Dr. Wyson?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the annual comprehensive financial report and all official parts thereof for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four.
So moved.
I don't want to do second.
Motion, second?
We'll go back and forth.
And Ms. Sellers?
And I can go ahead and speak to this one as well too. So this audit report was, um, uh, discussed, uh, with the audit committee. Cherry Becker performed the audit for the district. Um, this was for fiscal year end, June thirty, twenty twenty four. Uh, this particular report, uh, was a clean report. Uh, and so, uh, there were no audit adjustments and there were no findings. The two federal programs that were audited this year was, one, the, um, the S or the, um, stabilization, uh, grant, uh, grant. And then also the special education cluster program as well. So but those were the two federal programs audited this year.
Thank you. All right, so we have our motion, our second. I don't see any questions. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the act for, and it. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Um, moving on to item number three, uh, Dr. Wyson?
Thank you. I recommend approval of the district's school internal accounts audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and Ms. Sellers?
And I can. I can speak to this report as well too. So this audit report was on the schools' internal accounts. Uh, this is separately done and required, um, by, uh, state rule to be audited separately. It is actually showed, shows up in the column and inside of the annual comprehensive report underneath one of the special revenue funds. Uh, that's presented in that particular statement. So this is just a separate report on those schools. Additionally, there were, were no audit adjustments related to this report and, um, it was a clean of opinion as well too. So no findings. Right. Reportable findings, no reportable findings, I'll put it that way.
Thank you. Um, seeing no one lit up to speak, again, we've we've gone over this in our board briefings and appreciate all the work that that's done from your staff. So thank you very much, Ms. Sellers. So go ahead and vote on, uh, the approval of the district's internal accounts audit report. And that passes five to zero. Uh, moving on to item number four, uh, Dr. Wyson?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend that the board select a campus name for the Barbara A. Harvey K through eight campus that will serve grades K through three, beginning in two thousand twenty five, twenty six.
I'll make the motion when I want discussion.
Yeah, will there be a discussion? Yeah, we got a motion, a second for the discussion. Motion and second by Ms. Felton. Um, I'll say, I'll, I'll say by on the board docs attached. You know, we sat as a board and said, we want the staff and the input from the the stakeholders there. Um, and on the board docs, it it has the names and the results. Barbara A. Harvey K three primary campus, um, is, was the number one vote getter. Um, and so, Ms. Spray, you had a a comment and then?
Yeah.
Ms. Felton?
At the time, um, I failed to bring up what I thought would be a good name for that campus. And it was Barbara Harvey Core. Because that is the core, uh, function of education. Instead of primary, I was going to say core. I think primary is a little three syllable. Barbara Harvey, uh, what is it? Barbara Harvey K through eight, K through three, primary. I was just going to recommend maybe saying it Barbara Harvey K through, K through three, core instead of primary. But I I understand it didn't go out to the public and I see that they did do the votes. But I wanted to get the board's perspective on maybe doing just primary, the core instead of primary.
Okay.
Sorry. Did you?
So although I think it's, my opinion, I think it's, I don't, I don't think that's a bad name. I think that we've got to stick with what we, what we asked and we asked them to come up with it.
Right.
Um, and so my, 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 uh, choice would be to go with what the stakeholders put out there.
Right.
So.
Sure.
I don't know if anybody else.
No.
Um, I'm.
If not, it's, it's you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I still have my hand up.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, when we first discussed this, um, and I'm sure everybody remembers, I argued against, uh, naming the, uh, upper campus after the development in which it's located. Uh, because the stakeholders called it the upper school and the primary school. Um, and I wanted them to have an opinion in this. Um, if you look at the comments that have come along with this as well, they still are calling it the upper school and primary school. Um, in the comments is that a lot of them are referencing it. Um, in the, uh, the suggestions that were compiled, uh, on this forum, they have, uh, again, a hundred and fifty two respondents, uh, asking for it to be called the primary campus. Seventy for Moccaswell Wall Road, at Moccaswell Wall Road, sixty five for at Copperstone, and then an assortment of other things. Um, myself, I, uh, actually was very interested in one of the comments in here in which, uh, one of the respondents said that copper, to name it, uh, at Copperstone. Because the land was donated versus, uh, Pat Neil making you pay for the other land, which is actually not quite accurate. I believe the land for the upper campus came from a different developer. Is that, or did it come from Mr. Neil? Okay. All right, so I wasn't quite sure where that was. Um, so, um, at the recommendation of the, um, that I would be in favor of either at Moccaswell Wall Road or at Copperstone. Um, I believe that the the campus family will continue to call it the upper school and lower school regardless of what name we give the building. Um. But if we, it needs a building name, uh, as I had requested, so, uh, either of those I would be fine with.
But not primary?
So you're wavering from primary?
Uh, no, not primary.
Okay. Ms. Chaney?
So. Okay, so Ms. Felton, you're, you don't, you would prefer not to go with primary even though that was a top vote getter, right?
Um, I believe they're going to call it that anyway. So, um, but for directional purposes in terms of somebody driving around, um, Mox and Walla Road is where the school is. So which is why I would support that most. Um, but what they're going to call it is what they're going to call it.
Yeah. As far as quorum, Ms. Spray, I'm not, when I hear that word, I doesn't.
It's an afterthought. Don't ponder on it very long.
I wanted to address it.
Don't ponder it. It was an afterthought and I talked to the superintendent about that, you know, so, sorry.
Is Copperstone the name of the development right there? Is that the housing development?
Correct. It's, um, if you go out of the school entrance and turn left, there's the gate for Copperstone.
So why not? If we really want to make it specific, which I like the idea of tying it to neighborhoods. Because Mox and Halla Road is a big, long road.
Right.
Why not, why not use Copperstone? Is there a reason but?
No, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay.
Okay. Do we make a motion on?
We have no, we have no motion.
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, as far as it makes.
Okay. I would go to copper, with Copperstone just because it ties it. I mean, if you know where Copperstone neighborhood is and you know where that school is, just like if you know where North River Ranch is, you know where the school is. But if that's the idea is to tie it to some geographic location, that would be the most specific. But these are not follow my swords issues for me. I'll go with the flow, so to speak, you know?
Do you want to make a motion for Copperstone?
Yeah, you want to make a motion? Uh, he doesn't, or do you have something?
I do. I would like to make one comment.
I'll say.
Um, just like Mr. Tatum said, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm pretty flexible here. But I do want to take a moment to highlight the creativity of our respondents.
Oh, my goodness.
Those were fabulous.
I really do want to, I, you know, these are always so good. Like Heather said, it's, you know, it's just like, you go straight to the comments, you know? I don't look at the results first, straight to the comments. And I don't think it's going to get three votes, but Barbara A. Harvey OG.
Yeah. That was one of my favorites.
Name right there. She is an OG. Props to Barbara Harvey. Uh, no, but I, um, I kind, I liked primary because that's what people are using, but, excuse me, but the, uh, rationale around, around Copperstone makes sense to me too. So, um, I could support either one of those. If I can't get three votes for Barbara Harvey.
So I'll make. So you want to make a motion?
So I will go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, name the current, uh, original campus of Barbara Harvey K eight as, uh, Barbara Harvey K eight at Copperstone.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. And I don't see any other further discussion. So, uh, Ms. Cox, you have that?
Are you doing your motion on grandicus?
Okay. I clicked it.
The request to speak, are you doing it too? You should.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it up there.
I don't know. It's just, yeah.
I'd take.
I would throw in the K through three.
K three.
Well, it's not, it's still Barbara Harvey K eight.
I mean, the K, the K through three campus, which is the current campus, but I would just make sure that's in there, that the K.
Right.
And I'd take out the second campus. We have Barbara Harvey K eight. We've, we chose to name it Barbara Harvey Cave Eight at North River Ranch. So this should be Barbara Harvey K eight at Copperstone. To be consistent.
Right. That looks good.
Take out the second campus.
It doesn't say second.
After K eight, take campus out. So it just says at Copperstone.
There you go.
All right, we good?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cox. So let's go ahead and vote on the motion. So go and vote on the motion to name the current campus of Barbara Harvey, the Barbara Harvey K eight at Copperstone. That passes five to zero.
Get us on.
Item number five, Dr. Weisner.
Thank you Chairman. I recommend approval of revisions to the job description for Director of Purchasing.
So moved.
I'll second.
The motion is second, Dr. Weisner, you wanna explain?
Did you?
Yep.
Okay.
For folks, what this entails?
Thank you Chairman. This is a update to a job description that is currently vacant. We're in the process of searching for our next Director of Purchasing and as I've done on prior occasions, when we have a vacancy, it's a good time to take a look at the job description and sometimes there's little cleanup, sometimes there are changes to job duties and various titles. There's no financial impact here, the salary schedule remains the same.
Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second.
Yeah, we already had a first and second.
Oh, sorry.
So we're ready to, we're ready to go ahead and vote?
I'm behind.
Oh, sorry.
On the approval of the revisions to job description Director of Purchasing? Mr. Tatum?
Oh, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna do that.
And that passes five to zero. Item number six, Superintendent Weisner.
Thank you Chairman. I recommend approval of the revision of the job description of Director Communications Family and Community Engagement to Director Communications.
So moved.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Dr. Weisner, you wanna explain this one too?
Yes Chairman, thank you. Board members, as you're aware, our current Director of Communications and Community and Family Engagement, Mike Barber, has announced to the leadership team that he intends to retire on June thirtieth, as scheduled, that was always his plan, was to finish up. We wanna update this job description to get it ready for posting later this week. I want a long lead time to search for the right candidate. Upon reflection, we did narrow the title to Director of Communications. There was a time when some school districts operated without this type of function, just the communications part is more than a full-time job with so many different communication channels now and the changing school choice landscape and so we really wanna focus on, on finding the best communications professional to come in and represent our school district. So, these changes, I think, position us well to advertise this position and attract great candidates and again, there's no financial impact, there's no change to the salary schedule.
All right, thank you. Yeah, well, Mr. Barber's done a great job in the district and, but I look forward to seeing the candidates come into this and to, to replace him. So, let's go ahead and vote, we got our, nobody's up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the revision of the Director of Communications. And that passes five to zero. Brings us on to item number seven. We do have a public comment and that is Dr. Willhoyt.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. My name is Dr. Skip Willhoyt. I'm a twenty-six year veteran of the school district. My tenure with the district actually goes back thirty years to when I was hired as a dean at Manatee High School and really goes all the way back to nineteen seventy-two when I first stepped foot into Ms. Buck's kindergarten classroom at Bayou Elementary School. I'll go back a long way with the district. I'm here this evening because the superintendent is recommending my termination. Because I've chosen to fight this decision, he's recommending that I go on unpaid leave pending the outcome of a hearing by the state that I've been forced to file. Regarding the allegation of excessive force that is the impetus for the superintendent's recommendation, I disagree with those terms, or disagree with those terms in the strongest possible way. I was attacked and threatened by a student with an extensive violent history, doing the same to school staff and even law enforcement. At no time did I use excessive force with this student and I think that's clear based on the video. I broke no law and committed no act of abuse as evidenced by the refusal of DCF and local law enforcement to even investigate this situation. I broke no district policy according to the district's own investigative conclusions. I find that the superintendent's recommendation for my termination is nothing more than a malicious and unjustified attempt to finally remove me following a long line of targeted behavior by both himself and our former superintendent. And I intend to provide prima facie evidence to support this at a more appropriate time. Deciding that this is not the strongest case, the superintendent's decided to pile on my entire disciplinary history. I can only assure you that these cases are all involving situations of ridiculous and absurd and false allegations, incompetent investigating by our HR staff, and multiple violations of my civil rights. I have contemporaneous rebuttal statements for each one of these incidents and can provide witnesses who will attest to the veracity of those rebuttals and whose own statements at the time were either never considered or, or taken. So, that's one thing to consider about that as well. So as far as my past history, there's a lot to be, to be taken in there. Throughout my entire employment history, I have dedicated my life to this district. I've served this district with distinction and our community with distinction over those twenty-six years. I have received nothing but the highest possible evaluation on my personnel evaluations every single year. In my more than twenty years at the district level, I've brought millions of dollars to this district through grants that I've written and I've worked hundreds of hours every summer off the clock to ensure that our district remained mission-ready throughout the entire school year. I'm a twenty-four-seven guy and I've been that way for a long time. I consider myself to be well-liked by the vast majority of my colleagues. I also am well-respected by those same colleagues. And more importantly, I've made a difference in the lives of thousands of families and children over the years through my work. I have dedicated my life to this organization and to my, serving my own hometown community. I find it both unconscionable and reprehensible that I would be faced after thirty years, nearly thirty years of dedicated service and a lifetime of affiliation, that I would be faced with a manner of termination that I'm facing right now, without even a single conversation. To agree with the superintendent's recommendation not only breathes life into these faulty allegations, but it will create a financial hardship and enduring one for me, as this is my only source of income and I'll be forced into an immediate and early retirement. Such a decision also may greatly jeopardize and may even eliminate my ability to seek justice in this matter. I wanna thank you guys for the opportunity to be up here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our only public comment for item number seven, so I send it over to you, Dr. Weisner?
Thank you Chairman. I recommend approval to place employee VW on unpaid administrative leave pending a hearing on the merits.
Well, I'll make the motion so that we can have a discussion about it, it doesn't mean that...
I'll second for the same reason.
That I'm in favor of necessarily, but...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Dyar?
Yes, thank you Chair. I just wanna remind the board, the, the action before you, the motion, is limited to just voting on the superintendent's request to place the employee on unpaid administrative leave pending a hearing on the merits and the hearing is with DOA. Also, you should not be discussing the merits of the case because as you know from earlier today, these cases end up back with the school board, or can end up back with the school board, so you have to remain neutral in that regard. So the, so the motion is just placing the employee on unpaid administrative leave pending the DOA hearing and that's been the practice of the school district for, forever and pretty much around the state. Otherwise, people would be getting paid and as you know, these things can go on a while. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any board members up to speak unless we just haven't hit our Granicus yet. Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions for lawyers. Mr. Dyar, you were saying that this is, this is a regular procedure? To place an employee pending leave or on unpaid leave pending their hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
And typically, how long do, does it take between now, say, and when the subject is able to receive their hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It is difficult to give you an estimate in all cases on how long it takes DOA to hear one of these. A rough estimate is ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
Are you done or you have more? I'm sorry, I'm relogging into Granicus, so...
I'm done at the moment.
Okay. You sure?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can always come back.
Yep, go ahead.
Thanks Chad. No, in answer to that question, having been through multiple DOA issues during previous board service and then...
Hey, sorry, I'm sorry, real quick. Granicus died, nobody can log into Granicus.
Oh, okay.
The old-fashioned way, put your hand up.
Raise your hand, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. From previous experience and statute may have changed since I had one last, but I believe it's by statute sixty days. From, I could be wrong, it may have changed, but I thought it was sixty.
I'm sorry, can you clarify sixty days?
From, I don't know if it's by the time of the filing or by the time we take this action, but there is, again, I, I didn't realize this question was gonna come up, I would've looked it up, but I, I thought it was sixty days. Like it must, by statute, it must happen within sixty days.
Oh, the DOA hearing, you mean?
That DOA hearing in front of an officer must happen within sixty days.
Oh.
I haven't had one of these hearings, no one has requested.
Yeah, and what I'm saying may be old information, so I wanna give that caveat, but...
I just mentioned in other areas, it takes a while for DOA to set the hearing, everybody to agree on mutually agreeable dates, get it back, get an order from the ALJ, it's a recommended order, it then comes back to the board for action.
Okay. Like we had earlier today.
Exactly like we had earlier today, that was over a two and a half year period, I believe.
Yeah. Well, that one had extenuating circumstances.
Yeah.
That was extenuating.
If there's nobody else, no, that's okay, I'll keep going, I wanted to answer that. But I, I have more, but if somebody else wants to go first, that's fine.
Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, thank you. Well, first, I wanna, I wanna, this was originally on consent, I wanna thank the superintendent for pulling this immediately as soon as I asked. And the reason I wanted it moved to new business, because I think any employee, let alone a twenty-plus year employee, in a situation like this when their career is being put in jeopardy deserves, you know, like Dr. Willhoyt just did a chance to at least address the board before we make a decision like this, cause we're, we're putting him on the path toward possible termination. And, you know, I just think when you take an action like this, this is, this is a very strong action, I've said this many times before in previous board service, like we have a lot of power here and I think we need to be careful with it and I think we also need to be transparent. So it's, it's about transparency and about, you know, fair due process to any employee when such a strong action as this is taken. I, I know we're only to speak on the, on the motion itself, so I won't speak to the evidence contained in the agenda board work or the OPS report, but I'm not gonna support this, but I do have a question. If this motion does fail, Attorney Dyar, Attorney Penley, if this motion does fail, that would only mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that would only mean that Dr. Willhoyt remains on paid leave while he awaits a DOA hearing? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so there's really no other outcome here, it's either motion fails and he remains on paid leave or the motion is supported and he goes on unpaid leave, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you.
Okay. Or I'm sorry, did you have something?
No, I'm listening, I'm listening.
So for one of the attorneys, we, we can't really speak to the merits of the case at this point, is that what you're, you're telling us or...
Yes, and you shouldn't talk to anybody about the merits of the case either. Individually.
Individually?
Yeah.
So obviously not amongst ourselves, cause that's a sunshine issue, but when you say anyone like, anyone?
Yes.
Like my mom or, you know, my dad?
You need to remain neutral and then you'll have the benefit of the record, to look at the entire record and then when you have your, your final hearing like you had today in the other manner.
Because if, if I were to talk to somebody, what are the legal ramifications? Not that I'm gonna go do it, I'm just trying to understand, cause I, I would like to address the circumstances of the case, but apparently at this point, it's not a good idea legally to do that, so what are the consequences of...
Well, it's kinda like you're the judge.
Right.
And you're talking to one of the litigants on the side.
Yeah.
So you...
But I, but I mean, members of the community, you're saying, don't talk to members of the community, don't talk, if someone comes up to me and says, I'd like to talk to you about this case or sends me an email, I should just tell them, I'm sorry, I, I can't discuss the case with you or...
Well, your, your understanding of the case will be built on your review of the record.
Right.
In the, in the hearing before the Division of Administrative Hearings.
But what I'm asking for is legally, you're, if people may come up, like, who knows, I may be, I may be in a bowling alley and someone says, hey, I'm a really good friend of the person in question here and they say, I wanna speak to you about this case or I have some information I'd like you to know, should I, my, my response should be what at that point?
That you're not allowed to talk about it.
Okay. Mr. Penley, you agree with that?
Yeah, in, in these cases, the board sits in what is known as a quasi-judicial manner, meaning that just like a judge, you have to maintain impartiality until you hear all the evidence. Since the, this is a case that doesn't come directly before the board, it's, a request has been made by the employee to refer this matter to the Division of Administrative Hearings, DOA, and they will assign an AL, excuse me, an ALJ to hear the case and that record will then be compiled and the ALJ will issue a recommended order based on the evidence and the law that he sees. That then comes back to the board in, in those cases for you to enter a final order. So once you're placed in that quasi-judicial position of being the ultimate determination, you, you must maintain neutrality until that record is presented to you.
And maintaining neutrality means not providing any public opinion on the, on the case at that?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
So, if you were not to be put on unpaid leave, are there legal precedents that we set when, when a similar case comes before us and, and we make a different, we, this person we put on unpaid leave, this person we, we leave on paid leave? Do we open ourselves up to some type of legal, hey, you did it for this person, but you didn't do it for that person and my circumstances are the same, or is that just kind of our judgment to make up here or what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
It, it would be precedent-setting, in fact, to the, to the contrary of past practice of the district that has always placed employees who request hearings on unpaid administratively pending the outcome of that hearing. That has always been the practice of the district and it is the practice of districts all across the state, that you let that administrative proceeding play out and then it comes back to the board. Otherwise, you're going to be paying all of, any employee who is subject to a termination review, you will have to pay them through the remainder of that, that process. It would set a precedent of, of having those employees remain on paid administratively pending the outcome of the hearing and those can take some time.
So, are you, what I think I heard you just say was that if we were to leave a person in question here on paid leave, that that would, in your mind, set a legal precedent where everybody else from this point forward could say, well, you, you did it for that person, do it for me or...
Absolutely.
Oh, no, no, hold on.
And so that's a concern of yours or...
It is a concern.
And then if someone wanted to sue us and say, well, you did it for person X, now you have to do it for me, it wouldn't be, we can't use our judgment up here to say, well, we think this person should be on paid leave while they're going through the DOA process and this other person should not be on paid leave? It would take away our ability to make those kind of, but go ahead.
It, it would.
So you think it's precedent-setting?
I do.
Mr. Dyar?
Yes, I agree. It would actually encourage people to always request a hearing and at least get pay to that process and then if you drag the hearing out, you continue to get paid and not have to work. It actually would encourage that behavior, so we're, that's the concern.
At this point, I'm really not allowed to make any comments on the case. At this point, I'm really not allowed to make any comments on the case.
Correct. Just the decision, just the motion that's before you.
I'll just make one last comment, and that is it. It pains me to, to not be able to, as, as a leadership educator, like an executive coach, I, I would just, it just pains me that we've gotten to this point with someone who obviously has been a, a lot of service to the community. But, but my point is, is that when it, when it crosses the line from, I'm trying to work things out with the administration, or my supervisors, or my bosses, to now we're at a legal, we're in a legal position, that kinda changes the rules of the game. What I'm trying to say is, I, I, I would've liked to have seen, when I say would've, I'm not criticizing anybody that didn't go down the way that it should, I'm just saying that it's a shame that we couldn't, when I say we, I mean, again, I'm not pointing the fingers at anybody, that, that the whole, everybody involved, and I've seen this in my leadership work, and I've been involved in it sometimes, right, where we just, we all take a step back and go, how am I, how am I contributing to being part of the problem here, right, both sides? And could we have worked this out somehow, where we didn't have to get to a point where now we're, we're in this really kinda very restrictive legal box, where we might have to take some very negative action against someone who, in many ways, you know, obviously has been an asset to the school system, but now we face this kinda situation, and I'll just end at that without, because I can't talk about anything else at this point, so it's just a shame.
Ms. Bray, sorry, I'll, I'll come back.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, sorry. I'm trying to find a policy number for paid and unpaid administrative leave. Do we have a policy number that I could find, real quick here?
I personally don't know of any policies.
I, I've been looking for it.
More procedural stuff.
Right.
But I have no clue.
Right. I know we can't talk merits up this particular case, but in other cases, I was able to review documents as early as today to base my opinion on. And I understand, if we, you gotta do it for one, you do it for all. I hate that mentality, to be honest with you, I think it should be a case-by-case basis, in my opinion. I wish I could find a policy, because I'd like to know what policy it is, that, you said it was a statewide policy?
No, ma'am, I, I'm sorry, if you understood that, that's a misstatement, that.
A statewide practice.
It is the practice of all school boards that I am aware of, that when a employee termination hearing is invoked, that the employee is based on, placed on unpaid administrative leave pending the outcome of that hearing.
Unfortunately, in my short term being here, we've had this too often, for one reason or another. I'm having difficulty with this for a couple of reasons. Uh, I'm gonna let somebody else finish, I'm gonna try to find this particular policy that we have, just in case. Go ahead, Ms. Felton, or Mr. Kennedy, if you want.
Go ahead, Charlie, if you'd like to go first.
Whoever, once again.
You can go first.
Oh, okay.
I'm still.
Okay, now, first, um, from the Florida bar, proceedings at DOA move more rapidly than civil cases in circuit courts, most hearings are scheduled sixty to ninety day, pardon me, sixty to ninety days after a petition for hearing is filed with an agency. So, that's not in statute, but it says typically. I, I need to, um, push back, um, on a couple things we heard from legal, because I, respectfully, I disagree. I don't believe our quasi-judicial role starts until DOA has issued an opinion. So, to say to an elected official, you are not allowed to speak to a constituent on an issue? I, I just, I don't, I don't think that's constitutional nor fair to elected officials. And then, I get it, once that, once that ALJ issues an opinion in the case, I agree, we are in the cone of silence for, lack of a better term, and then when we get to DOA, the only thing that we can consider, or when we, when it comes from DOA back to us, the only thing that we can consider, correct me if I'm wrong, please, is what's in the record of the DOA hearing, and then the fifteen minutes each side has to present to the board, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, you know, we, it's, it's okay to disagree, I just disagree that we are silenced as of today, I just don't think that's true, nor do I think it's fair. Ms. Bray, I agree, everything is on a case-by-case basis, there are no two, anybody that does this blend knows that situations might be similar, but no two cases are alike. And I think the fear of employees saying, well, let me go roll my dice with the board and see if they'll put me on paid leave, that's certainly a possibility, but I don't think it sets a precedent. It may set, it may create a situation where people come and ask, and then that's when we have to go look at the case and decide, is this just, or is this unjust? I'm not gonna talk about the details of the case, um, but I've read everything I've been given, I've read the board work, and, um, I am uncomfortable with the superintendent's case against the employee, and therefore, I'm not supporting, um, putting him on unpaid leave on his, while he waits sixty to ninety days for DOA. Frankly, it's, I'm sorry that we've come to this and we're hashing this out in a board meeting, because I wish we could have found a solution for everybody involved that would've let everybody walk away, but we didn't, and so here we are. But, we just had a, we just had, before this meeting at three thirty today, we had a, another employee matter that we had a decision from DOA, we had to make a decision, and, and we did that based on the rules of DOA, and the rules of become, and our quasi-judicial role. And I made a decision on that one based on the facts that had, had been presented to us, um, as I would do with any, any of these cases. So, I, I just don't think we can paint with a broad brush on any discipline matter. Uh, like I said at the beginning, I think an employee who has been with it this long, and has the track record as long, any employee deserves transparency and due process. But, the facts of the case and years of service, those are, those factors weigh on my decision here, and I'm not gonna support the motion. So?
Question, um, if, and I'm not sure of the legalese here, but, um, if, uh, when, uh, our employee goes to his hearing, and if the, the case is found to be without merit, and they don't recommend firing, will he receive all of his back pay?
Yes, that's normally the order.
Um, I, um, I also have a, a agreement that things should be taken on a case-by-case basis in terms of, um, every employee who comes before us, this is the part of the job that sucks. And I, I strongly believe that everyone should be treated as innocent until proven guilty, and should not be punished until there is, um, a final order out there, um, unless somebody is in a danger to themselves or others, then we, you know, then we worry about it in terms of other things, and this is not that kind of a case. And I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this one.
Um, I just wanna be very clear that this does not bind us to back pay. The DOA officer will make a recommendation, just like we had at three thirty today, and then we can make any decision we want on that decision. We have to, as we heard earlier, we have to justify any changes we make to the DOA officer's findings of fact and application of the law, but we're not bound to pay back. If the, even if the DOA officer says you must, or it's recommended that you pay back pay, we are still not bound to do that. So, it's, we're not locked into anything. Thanks.
Do you have any, to the attorneys, do you have any comments on Mr. Kennedy's rebuttal to your legal opinions in the sense of, it, it does seem odd that, I mean, at what point are, it's like, for instance, when we go to impasse with, when we have negotiations, right? There's a point where you're, you know, you're, there's a cone of silence, so to speak, before that, you can have discussions with people, and that you really aren't kind of silent, so. What, what I'm struggling with here is that we can't, because there are some comments that I would like to make, and it would like, I'd like to maybe influence other people about the record that I, that I, you know, have in front of me, but I'm being told that, I mean, what, what, what can we discuss tonight? Other, I mean, you know, what, what about the case that we allowed to discuss? And, and why is it that, as of this very moment, I, I really, as Mr. Kennedy said, not allowed to talk about, to my constituents about something that's before us, I'd just like to understand that a little better.
I'll take a stab at that, the, uh, so the, so, there's a lot of complexity to it, that, that you don't have the benefit of right now, that, that you will, after it goes through the DOA hearing process. There's a lot of nuances to everything, and, and I think you saw that in the case you had today, at three thirty. I mean, right now, you have, you have a very small amount of information, and it, and you don't have the benefit of, uh, the full picture of, that the hearing will, will bring out, including, including video evidence and just everything that goes with it. So, the, what you, what you shouldn't be doing right now is, is sort of litigating the entire case.
Right.
You, you should just be making a decision on, uh, unpaid or paid leave pending the administrative process.
Based on what?
Um, your review of, of what you've seen with the board works.
So, I'm not, it's, on any other issue on an agenda, you know, I talk to the public, they might wanna come, like, if we, if we decide to put him on unpaid leave tonight, and, and people from the community come in support of, of the person in question, I can talk to them, I can, it just is odd, I, I can't have a discussion with them, I mean, what, what if somebody brought me a packet of emails and said, hey, look, you know, here's some emails that I think are very important, it shows that, uh, certain people within, I don't, whatever in the school system have been taking these actions, I, I thought they're relevant to the case, I, I just hand them back and go, no, I'm not allowed to look at those, I mean, that's why you get the big bucks.
You're not supposed to.
You're not supposed to?
No.
I think that's gotta be presented in the DOA, i- in, in the hearing that comes back from DOA, that's gotta be presented, is the way I look at it.
Yeah. I mean, uh, example I can give, when a, when a city or county commission board has got an application to rezone property, they sit quasi-judicial and cannot meet with people and, uh, get influenced on the outcome of the final vote. They have to say, sorry, I can't, my lawyers told me I, I can't talk to you about that. So, it's, uh, it's kind of a unusual legal concept, but it, if you think of yourselves, you're, you're kinda like a, a court that will make the final decision. So, you're supposed to, uh, avoid being influenced until you have all the information at the end of the process.
Okay. What, Mr. Penley, what about the precedent-setting? A couple of board members have made the statement of, well, if we do it for, for person X, doesn't necessarily mean that that sets a precedent for Y and Z and everybody else that comes before us again, and, go ahead.
So, let me go back to the, the original basis of your questions, what, at what time? In procedurally, most frequently, these cases come before the board on the superintendent's recommendation to terminate, and it's unusual, it's not the, the typical course that you would have a request for a DOA hearing. Normally, in, when I say normally, typically, in eight and a half out of ten cases, you're going to see that the employee is terminated by the board at the first opportunity. When an employee asks for a hearing, though, the board knows that it is going to sit in a quasi-judicial fashion, because a hearing has been requested, as it has in this particular instance, where that's going to go to DOA, DOA's going to complete an evidentiary record, make a recommended order that will come back. That's why I take the position that your quasi-judicial function begins when the hearing is requested. This hearing was requested last Monday. So, throughout this process, it's, it's one of procedure that you let the process work, and both sides receive due process of law through that process. As to precedent-setting, it's been the past practice of this board and all school boards that I am familiar with, that when a recommendation has been made for termination and the employee requests a hearing, at that point, they go on unpaid administrative leave, so that there's not an incentive to drag out the process so that you're continuing to get paid leave, not produce any work, and let the hearing process take however long it takes. If it's sixty days, which is typical in ESE cases, um, it's not typical in employee termination cases that I'm familiar with. But there haven't been that many. So, it's an unusual, and can take a lengthy amount of time, during which the person is continuing to get paid at taxpayer expense, while there is a pending recommendation and hearing on termination of that employee. That's why it's, it's the precedent that typically occurs, the employee does not request a hearing, termination occurs, and it moves forward in that manner.
And I suppose there's no option, ninety days down the road, the hearing hasn't happened, and we feel like it's being drug out or something, that we can't go back and say, okay, well, now we're gonna, could we? Could we say, well, now we're gonna move him to?
I, I have certainly never seen that procedure employed by any board.
And, and you're concerned that someone would actually sue us in the future and say, well, you did it for X, why aren't you doing it for me? Or, or, is that, I mean, be honest with me, is that something you're really concerned about?
I don't think a lawsuit is the appropriate forum for that, but it's certainly to have a, wage a campaign of public persuasion before it gets to that point, yes.
Would, meaning, it's, it would be wrong to wage a per, a case of public persuasion, or what?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
You haven't had the benefit of having a record developed and evidence put before you. You're hearing only one side of the store.
Well, we are hearing two, I mean, we've heard from the person in question tonight, and then we, we do have a case, case in front of us, so to some degree, we haven't, we don't have all the facts, but we have heard from both sides, and I have received emails from people about this case, I haven't responded, and other than saying, thank you for your email, I consider the information, so, just so you know that, but. Okay. I, I appreciate you guys' honest and forthright advice.
Thanks. Or, or, I'm sorry, are we done?
Yeah, for now.
I'll just, I'll give my thoughts, so maybe we can push this question. I, I agree with, a lot of sentiments have been saying, I think it's unfortunate we're here, it sucks we're in this position. I do believe it, it is case-by-case, my three years that I've been here, there's not been people who've been fired coming out of the woodwork for DOA, um, this, I mean, this is not an, an everyday occurrence. You know, I think that somebody knows they did something wrong, they did something wrong, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see this necessarily, all of a sudden, every single person that's non-armed or fired, right, non-armed, it doesn't matter, fired, etc., is gonna now of a sudden come up with this, I'm not in support of this. So, to, to, to have him going unpaid, um, too long in the district, too many lives changed, to, to, to force someone to do it without the due process, so I'm, I'm not for it.
I just got another comment, other than, I found a policy, and it's policy three five five zero, and it is very vague, very, I'm saying so vague, I had to read it three times, it's so short, and then tried to decipher what lawyer talk would convert that word to. I mean, the last time it was updated from Neola, says twenty thirteen, uh, but, it says adopted in twenty seventeen, so that's a little confusing to me there. I'm leaning toward the, it's a case-by-case. a case by case basis as well.
Cindy, could you, could you read it to us, please?
Oh, can I read it? I, okay, I can see that. "Any complaint against a member of the ins, instructional staff which arises with the membership of the school board or which comes to the attention of the school board, except through the superintendent, shall be referred to to the superintendent for decision. In cases for the instructional staff member or the complaint, plaintiff is not satisfied with the decision of the superintendent, an appeal may be taken by either party to the board through the superintendent for final decision. Pursuant state law, a complaint of misconduct against the district administrator and all other, all of information obtained pursuant to an investigation by the district of the complaint of misconduct, conduct are confidential and exempt from inspection or copied until investigation ceases to be active or until the district provides written notice to the employee, which is the subject of the complaint in the matters set forth below, and if the district either has con, conduct, concluded the investigation with a finding not to proceed with the disciplinary action or files, uh, charges, or conducted an investigation with a finding to proceed with disciplinary action and/or file charges. The investigation results in such a finding, the district shall also, uh, file legally sufficient complaint regarding the misconduct as required by the state law policy, state law policy 8141, mandatory reporting of misconduct of a certified employee, which is, that's mandatory report for anyone else that would want to know what that is. Any material that is derogatory to an employee shall not be open to, for inspection for additional 10 days after the employee has been notified either by certified mail, return receipt, requested his or her address or record, or by personal delivery, the employee's signature or copy of materials to be filed shall be proof of such material were given to the employee with the understanding that such signatures merely signifies receipt and does not necessarily indicate agreement with this context. Employees bargaining should refer to their negotiating agreement." So, it's got Florida statutes underneath there, but that's all I could find on it. Um, to me, it's, there's, okay, district administration, uh, bargaining union administrators, it, it's all... To me, sometimes it is a case by case basis.
Ms. Felton, did you have anything else to add to that, or were you just wanting her to read that?
Uh, no, I do have something else. Um, knowing that we were going to have this, and this was the only thing that we were supposed to speak to, uh, not speaking to the merits of the case, uh, I elected to not read any of the background information. Uh, on the merits, I wanted to just look at what was presented to us in the one document, um, and, and to go from there. Um, and it states in the, the document that we were given, um, that, you know, he has the right to a hearing, which of course, you know, he should, and that also, in the statement, it says that, uh, the law, law enforcement and DCF, uh, both elect, uh, neither agency elected to pursue charges. Um, and so that also makes me feel that, um, as, as they felt, those agencies felt that, um, there wasn't a criminal act, then this is something that we don't need an immediate decision on, or, um, I guess not, not decisions, that's not the right word, but, um, I think you're kind of following where I'm going with this, um, that it's not something that is probably going to result in, uh, or has resulted in, um, something that's going to require, uh, you know, lawsuits from families or anything like that. Um, and I think that we can, again, case by case basis, look at this, and, and I don't think I'm going to support it.
I can say one more thing, real quick.
Sure.
Yeah, let me go to Ms. Kennedy, then come back.
Okay. Um, the, when the agenda, when we got our copy of the draft agenda, um, I noticed that what was attached to the agenda, to the boardwork, was the letter received by Dr. Will Hoyt and the superintendent's statement of charges. So, in order to make a decision like this, and I'm not going to talk about the facts of the case, but in order to make the proper decision in this, again, and in fairness, and to make sure we make it, do, heading in the right direction, I requested the OPS report around this incident. I received it the next morning, and I, and I appreciate the, the quick response. Um, so that, that way, I had both sides of the story, sort of, both sides of the story. At least, it, that gave, you know, you could read witness statements, you could hear from Dr. Will Hoyt himself, um, how he reacted to it, because what's on the boardwork is very one-sided, and I believe pushes the board toward following the superintendent's recommendation. But, as board members, as the Board of Directors of the school district, this is our role, is to oversee the superintendent and the superintendent only. And in this case, I disagree with the superintendent. It's not, um, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna happen from time to time that I disagree. And if this, if this motion fails, that Dr. Will Hoyt stays on paid leave, um, does that change circumstances with this action? Um, I know all Dr. Will Hoyt wants to do is go to work tomorrow. Um, and so maybe that opens up an avenue where we can find some agreement, I don't know. I'm just thinking through it here. But, um, the other, well, I, I said the other stuff already, I'll let you go, Chuck, we can call the questions if you want to.
Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, just want to clarify a couple of points, board members. I view this as a procedural recommendation. It is the next step, uh, in the process. Uh, the process is the same for every employee, regardless of what the concern is, or how long they've worked for the district, or, or who they've worked for. It's the same process. Uh, and, uh, tonight is not the night to, uh, talk about the substantive facts, the circumstances of the matter. Um, my team and I will respect the process, even though there's been lots of comments made. Um, but, to be clear, the process starts with a complaint. That complaint goes to the Office of Professional Standards, where it's investigated, during the investigation, the employee receives due process. The report is compiled, and, and when there is a serious concern, it goes to the discipline committee first, not to the superintendent. The discipline committee in this case is for senior administrators. Those administrators are former classroom teachers, former assistant principals and principals, district administrators, some in multiple districts, some in multiple states. These folks are also parents, grandparents, so they bring a variety of lenses. In this case, there was a unanimous recommendation for termination from those four senior administrators. That then is referred to my office, I review the record, take my time with it, to determine whether I concur or not, and then bring that recommendation forward. Uh, as, as counsel has shared, it is past practice in this district, in many others, and, and, and I believe a best practice, that when you get to the point of a hearing on the merits, you make the recommendation for, uh, for unpaid leave. Uh, there, uh, there are additional costs involved, uh, as the item states, in preparing for DOA hearings. Um, I believe that if a precedent is set, that some employees will be able to stay on paid leave and others not, that we may, um, see additional requests. That doesn't just mean continuing to pay the employee, it also means additional legal fees that are coming out of the general fund to prep these cases, whether they actually go to a DOA hearing officer, or whether they're just stretched out, and then the employee, uh, drops the case the day before the hearing. And so, the board does need to consider that, um, if we're going to deviate from past practice. I certainly know how to count to three, um, so I understand where we're heading. And at a later point, if, if we are going to do case by case, then perhaps the board will want to provide guidance on what that looks like. Um... Because at the end of the day, I certainly recognize the board's, uh, authority to, uh, to make this decision, um, but I'm responsible for the, for the day-to-day supervision of employees. Um, and I have to make the, the recommendations and the decisions when it comes to health, safety, and welfare, and I, I take that very, very seriously. And so, um, I, uh, under, again, understand that there are a lot of issues involved here, but again, for me, this is a procedural matter, and if the board wants to set new precedent, then certainly I'll, I'll request guidance, so that I bring you recommendations that you can support in the future. Thank you.
Yeah. Just one response to that, and, um, again, I say this respectfully, but to my board colleagues, I, well, I want to say again, we are the, we represent our constituents, to me, I don't want to put this on you, but to me, we represent our employees. Um, Superintendent Weisong just talked about the process that this went through. Um, the OPS report, and the OPS report is written by an employee of the superintendent. The discipline committee is made up of employees of the superintendent. So, we have to be that counterbalance, and I'm only speaking for myself when I say this, that I am not comfortable with the facts of this case leading to the end of someone's career. And, um, if I, if I had read all the information that had been provided, the boardwork plus the OPS report, if I had read that and been, and been satisfied with the facts of the case and the punishment, I would have never asked for it to be pulled from consent. But, once I read it and began to consider it, I, like, there are problems here, to me, there are problems here. And so, I'm stepping up in my role as that, the scales of justice, you know, putting some, you know, trying to equal out the, the scales of justice, so that we have a fair process. And, um, and we don't, you know, there could be a situation, Dr. Weisong, I'm not saying this is you, but imagine a situation where you have a superintendent who just wants to get rid of, like, 20 people. And so, if you don't have a Board of Directors overseeing the superintendent, those people have no hope. And, and a superintendent or any CEO could just get rid of a whole bunch of people, and those people, those employees would have no recourse. And so, um, that is what brings me here tonight. And I'm, and I'm voting no on this.
Just, um, and I want to tell, uh, Dr. Weisong that I, I listened to everything he said, and, and trying to look at this based on just what we have in front of us. We're not supposed to take into account the facts of the case, we're not allowed to discuss the facts of the case. And while, based on the facts of the case, I may feel differently, um, I still feel that if there are no criminal charges pending, that we are not looking at, uh, something, um, in, in that line of, of where... I'm trying to figure how to phrase this, but if we're just going to look at, this is a recommendation, this is the information that has been provided to us without looking at the facts of the case, if we're just supposed to look at that one aspect of it, then I feel like, then we need to continue with due process, as, as our employee has asked for a hearing, that, you know, he's able to do that. Um, and, and so that's, that's where I have to go on that.
Anybody else?
The OPS report, that's the Office of Professional Standards report.
Yes.
Why is, why was that not included with the boardwork that, that we were given? When I say why, and I'm not accusatorily asking why, I just, if it, if it was available to Mr. Kennedy, why wasn't it provided to the, or, as part of the record for us to review? Is that not standard practice, or?
I don't know, I, I don't make those board packets, so...
So, one thing I do want to consider here is that, you kind of alluded to it, Mr. Kennedy, that if we don't go with the superintendent's recommend, this is a little different aspect of it, but I mean, under, it's to some degree undermines, when we overrule the superintendent on something, it undermines his, his authority, and could lead other employees to say, well, you know, if I, if I mount a strong enough public affairs, you know, campaign, or whatever, it's, it's, it's a big deal to, as the CEO of an organization who has thoroughly considered the facts, and his staff has thoroughly considered the facts, to then override his recommendation, who generally, we have trusted with his judgment up until this point. That's a big deal. I'm not saying that we can't, I'm just pointing that out, that it, it, to some degree undermines his, his authority. One, one point I'd like to make is that, in the future, I mean, I've been in a lot of leadership organizations and big bureaucracies, and one thing that I've noticed is that, you know, the standard procedure, and I don't know what happened in this case ultimately down the, over the years, but the standard procedure for discipline is, provide written or verbal correction, uh, and then document it, and then see if it changes, and then provide more correction and document it, so that you have a legal record, that if you do get to this point, you can go to a DOA hearing or a legal court and say, we, we have the appropriate documentation, we, we followed the law. One thing that I don't see happen a lot on both sides is, is a sit-down where three questions are asked, and especially from the employees, right? What am I doing to make things more difficult? What have I been doing? If I have a track record, and that's in, that's in what we looked at today, if I have a track record, have some negative consequences in my file, what, what am I doing to make things possibly, potentially, maybe I'm not, but I need to at least ask the question, what am I doing to make things more difficult? What could I do differently along the way, so that I hopefully don't ever have to get to the point where we are now? And, how often could I check in with the people, with the people that are above me in my chain of command, so that I make sure that what I thought, what we could, what we decided was wrong, and then, kind of, the rehabilitation that we planned, the plan that we came up with is actually working? I have noticed in organizations that if, if the organization will take that approach, and the employee will take that approach, this point where we're at now can oftentimes be avoided, which is a really sad, sad point that we're at. So, I just wanted to offer that out there, too, that as we look at things like this in the future from both sides, whether you're the boss, or whether you're the employees, uh, ask those three questions. What am I doing to make things more difficult? You can have this discussion with your boss or your supervisors. Can we put together a mutual plan to make things better? And then, let's check back in with each other, I don't know, every week, every two weeks, every month, and see how my plan is, our plan is working out, if we need to tweak it a little bit, because I don't want to ever have to get to a point where, where I am right here. This, this case has kind of actually bothered me all day. You saw before I forgot to vote, because I was distracted, right? Like, I've just been, I've seen it coming on the agenda, like, because it is really a respected member of the community's life that we're, we're dealing with here. One point that Dr. Weisong did make is that this is a procedural thing that we're dealing with here. This is not a judgment on whether, uh, the person in question should eventually still be employed with the Manatee County School System or not. So, w, we could vote administratively tonight to put him on unpaid leave, and then, even if it went to DOA, and the recommendation was that he not be employed, we still have the opportunity to come back and say, no, we're, we're, we're going to keep him on the payroll. Is that not correct, right? We, even if, like, like, we had earlier in the day at our previous meeting, a DOA recommendation is just a DOA recommendation, right?
That's, that's correct.
And, 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 but to, to go against the DOA recommendation, there has to be a finding of, of fact or law, we have a better legal, but go ahead.
There is a point to be made there. When you, you must accept DOA's findings as to fact, because the, the ALJ, the Administrative Law Judge, has the ability to hear the evidence and judge the credibility of the witnesses. As a board reviewing...
As a board reviewing a recommended order, you don't have that. So the law provides that you have to accept the facts well stated and for which there's competent substantial evidence of record. If you're going to go against a fact, you have to make specific findings as to why the evidence was, you don't consider it competent or substantial. As to law, you can make the determination on your own as a board that the law is otherwise applied to the facts. Do you understand what I'm saying there? The the you kind of have to treat them a little bit separately. Facts are are pretty well established in the record are accepted. The conclusions of law as applied to those facts is where the board and the recommendation for any punishment or the outcome that the ALJ reaches is such subject to board discretion on a lesser standard.
What laws are applicable, I mean, what laws would be applicable in a case like this? But
Policy violations of policy violation of the standard of harm to students, that sort of thing.
So because we're not supposed to have discussions with members of the audience, I won't address myself directly. Obviously, the person's in the room, but I'll just make the statement that I'm going to support the motion. Because at this point, it's a procedural. It's not deciding whether he's going to be employed with us or not. There is a there is a history of and I will read from the from the record that we have that we were given. Respondent has been subject to prior progressive discipline for for previous employment related misconduct. Respondent has received multiple letters of reprimand, served various suspensions from work, has been provided directives concerning his conduct and has been reassigned job responsibilities directly related efforts to improve his job performance. Previous attempts at progressive discipline have proved unsuccessful in bringing about.
Excuse me, Chair, isn't this discussing the merit of the case?
I'm just reading what was in the what we were given. I assume I can read what's given. Is that not true or? This was this is public record. I mean, this was given to us today.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's it's just in in my, you know, I was in the Air Force for 30 years and I I served at some pretty high levels and got to a a point where people that have been around for 25 or 30 years and I can honestly say that at that point, there were very few, if any, people who had you know, multiple letters of reprimand, multiple things in their in their in their record at that point. And it really pains me to support this motion, but it's we're not deciding on whether he should be ultimately employed with the school system or not. We're deciding on should we follow the administrative procedure that is standard practice within within the system. And we do open up the door to other people coming and at and wanting to do the same thing, so. I'm not going to sleep.
What else?
Last thing, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, Rich, if I may, I just want to respond to a couple of things you said. Number one, you mentioned undermining the superintendent's authority. And I think if the board let me go back to what I said, what's on the board work is is only the superintendent's side of the story. So to so for us to just lay down and accept that as gospel, I think that undermines our authority. And so we have a role here as overseer of the district to say, I'm only speaking for myself again. There is something wrong with the facts of this case leading to a termination to me. And we send a message to the superintendent to say, don't bring us stuff like this. Either don't bring it or find a way to keep it out of the board meeting. And that's that's really what I hope we'll do. I'm not I'm not accusing the superintendent of doing anything nefarious or it's just my reading of the documents that were provided to us before this meeting tonight. And we have authority here too. Because if if we let this go forward, are we setting a bad precedent? And then who's the next employee? That's going to have, you know, let me just respond to what you just read. There's multiple disciplines in his file, but we don't know what they are because the OPS report wasn't provided in the board work. It was provided to the board after the fact upon my request, which is central to making this decision tonight and why I'm making the decision I'm making. So I would just ask the board to let's maintain our authority and and send this motion packing.
So let's say that Mr. Gray, back in the day, had come to us and said the same, well, he did, and we put him on unpaid administrative leave. So you you would say that it's just all based on the facts of it. Because we don't get to see the facts.
You can't.
I know, I know, I don't, I don't necessarily want to bring up someone else's old stuff. And I don't even know if we can legally do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we've we've kind of gone round and round and round on this.
Right.
I think we all kind of maybe have our opinions and and I don't know if anyone's going to be persuaded at this point. I don't think parliamentary, I can. Are we ready to vote? Let me ask you that.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to call the question.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
I don't think I could do that as chair. I don't know.
No.
Harvard rules.
Right.
Chair, Chair can make motions.
Okay, I didn't know.
Usually doesn't, he or she does not. But the chair has a lot to make motions.
So we, so you're calling the question.
I'm calling the question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so.
Your vote.
We don't have Granicus.
You vote on calling the question, right? Is that correct?
We do.
Yeah, Granicus should be up.
Yep.
It should be up.
Okay, but first.
We just vote by.
That's fine, but wait, are you, is that to call the question? Is that the vote to call the question?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm all I'm all the way out of Granicus.
It's almost like.
Let's just vote by hand, all in favor of calling the question. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. So is everybody else in Granicus other than me?
No.
No?
You said it was frozen.
No Granicus.
No Granicus, okay.
Because it'll take time to log in. All right, so we had our motion, we had our second. So approval of the recommendation to place employee VW on unpaid administrative leave pending a hearing on the merits. All those in favor, go and raise your hand and say aye.
So we're not, we're done, I can't, am I allowed to make comments when I
No.
Vote?
Nope.
The question is called.
Yep.
Yeah.
Suppose I could make comments in.
No.
Like public comments.
Sure.
So tell me, so the motion is, read the motion again two hundred and twenty please.
Approval of recommendation to place employee VW on unpaid administrative leave pending a hearing on the merits.
And you're and you're and what you're asking for is everybody who's in favor, say aye and raise.
Right now, yeah, anybody who's in favor, say aye and raise their hand. And I'll go, anybody opposed? This is all those in favor.
I know what I said before, but I'm not going, I'm not going to support the motion.
Okay, so all those in in favor of not supporting the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion does not pass. All board members descending zero to five with no votes coming from every board member. Move on to new business item. Item number one, approval of the travel expense for us board members to attend FSBA February sixth to the seventh, excuse me. Subboard members, February sixth to the seventh at the Hilton University of Florida Conference Center Gainesville, not to exceed 5,000. And this is for the school finance forum.
Right.
So I know most everybody's going, I am not.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bray. All those in favor of, well, any discussion on this particular item? All right, all those in favor of the approval of the travel expense, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Sorry, we didn't get back into Granicus.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still.
So it passes five to zero. Item number two, under new business is approval of the school board members to travel to Tallahassee, Florida for the new school board member part two and or annual day legislative event. This is not till March 17th. Through the 21st of 2025 through the FSBA, not to exceed $12,000. I know, I believe, oh, let's get a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Kenny, Spray. I know I'm going, I don't know how many other people. Ms. Spray?
I did, thank you.
Is all are all of us going?
I am not.
I am.
Okay.
You are, okay.
Sounds good. I know it's still a little bit away, but and I would encourage us all still reach out legislators, et cetera, before we make it up there. So you have our motion, your second. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of school board members traveling to Tallahassee for the legislative event. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes five to zero. Item number three.
Oh.
Approval of amendment two of the contract for board legal services from Dy Harrison Knowles Kirkland Pratt Capala. Estimated amount of $225,000 annually.
So moved.
Second.
I got the motion in, Mr. Dy.
Any discussion on the amendments or approval? Board members, anything? No?
I'm watching it.
We'll uh, we'll give you your evaluation later on.
We already did that.
A year from now. All right, so seeing no one to discuss on this item, let's go ahead and all if if you voting yes on the approval of amendment to the contract, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing none carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of the school board of Manatee County's legislative priorities.
So moved.
Second.
But I have discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. On our legislative priorities, some of those are through the greater, I got my notes somewhere.
Florida.
Greater, yeah, thank you, thank you. There are a lot of them mimic what we have for that group as well. And they're going to have a day in legislative in April. So I just want the board to think about, we just motioned and approved to go up in March. And then in April, the very following week, two weeks later, is the custodiums. So I don't know if everybody wants to go, but I'm, I've already offered to go as your liaison. Okay, so I just wanted to put that out there for you all. You didn't necessarily have to go.
Liaise.
Liaise, okay.
I I'm I'm just learning, so I'm coming along to learn.
It's about the same, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Spray, anybody else on legislative parties? All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the school board of Manatee County legislatures are our priorities. All those in favor, go and raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that passes five to zero. Item number 16, those are like, we have some informational stuff. I do want to let the public know, especially on item number four, the school safety requirements and monitoring reports. You know, due to new statutes and things that the legislature legislature has passed last year, we do have to get a quarterly report of any school safety requirements and monitoring reports. We have that and have been presented by that by our safety team and we appreciate them. They do a phenomenal job.
Yes.
We've gone to our updates, instructional. Update, Mr. Jensen.
Good evening, Chair, show, board members, Superintendent Weisong. Just a few quick updates since we had a long meeting already full of instructional updates. We'll be bringing you in addition to the great graduate presentation we had tonight from the instructional services team and Ms. Collins. We have, we'll be giving you the PM two math data presentation at Friday's workshop and really dissecting and working through that data. Our schools are currently finishing the PM two reading administration as well, and we'll be bringing that data to you in February. So kind of it's that time of year where we're reviewing data and making instructional decisions. And we'll continue that work with you over the next few weeks. I want to thank our STEM coordinator, Lynn Johnson, and our curriculum team for organizing the the first of several VEX robotics competitions this past Saturday at Southeast High School. I want to congratulate the Cyber Chimps, which was a team from Mills Elementary, which was our first place excellence award winner.
What was the name again?
The Cyber Chimps.
They had Princess Pickles too.
And that award is based on a combination of different criteria. It's the team's notebook and interview of the team and the rankings and their skills and teamwork competition. We'll also have a VEX competition this coming weekend at Hale Middle. Saturday's the middle school competition and Sunday is another round of elementary competitions. Both days are eight to four. Next week is also celebrate literacy week in our schools. So all schools have mini literacy activities. I know many of us are going into classrooms and reading to students throughout the week. We'll have guest readers, write your own story, design your own bookmark. And the theme for this year is building literacy, constructing the foundation for success. And schools will participate by including books related to workforce education in an effort to connect to Governor DeSantis's Get Their Workforce Education Initiative. Today was the first day of class for MTC for the spring semester. So we had many new students in class today. And if you know of someone who'd like to attend MTC, the fall 25 semester applications open February 6th. That's also when we begin open houses at MTC. We have a February 6th open house at East Campus and then a February 13th at Main Campus. And then we're also in the middle of the Manatee County Fair, which I had the pleasure of experiencing the steer showmanship on Friday night. Judging is complete for beef breeding, steers, rabbits and chickens. Dairy judging is today, goats are judged Wednesday, swine and dog shows are later this week. And then, of course, I want to congratulate all the student leaders at the Lakewood Ranch High School FBLA District 18 Award Ceremony last Friday as well. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Quick question if I could. MTC students started today and now is registration for the spring semester now closed? Or can students still register?
I would have to get that information from Mr. Wagner and follow up with you on that, but I'd be happy to bring that.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks so much.
And I don't know if this would be a question. Do you, Dr. Weisong, Mr. Chapman, last week was, I believe it was last week, was the choice size, you said it, MTC. Do we know like the number, I know one was elementary, one was lower. Would we know the numbers of like how many actually attended? I mean, I'm not saying someone was there like with a clicker. I mean, do we happen to know at all how many?
He's pulling out the clicker now.
He's getting his clicker out.
I already did my tie. Sorry. We actually had clickers, but I don't know the click count.
Had that, so I will, I will find the click count and and make sure through our board clerk.
I remember them having a clicker.
Yeah, I was just interested to see how many families are taking advantage of of going and seeing, you know, what what the choice is. Because typically haven't we done it at the individual high schools? Or do we do that as well on top of that?
Well, over the years, we've had many different priorities, right? We used to have all schools at Civic Center, we used to do all kinds of different ways. Many, many of the secondary schools had their own open houses the next night and and nights thereafter. And then thus then the elementary ones as well. So we'll we'll get the
Yeah.
Click count. It was, it was a great turnout and appreciate all the staff too who were involved in that. A lot of work there, but thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, thank you, Mr. Jensen, operations.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Weisong. Give you a couple of brief items. We held an operational job fair on January 9th. We had 82 attendees. Job offers were made for to three custodians, one food service worker and 18 transportation potential staff members. 10 bus attendants, six bus drivers and two bus drivers that already had their CDL. So they were able to start training today, so moving forward there. On January 7th, we had a dedicated nurses' job fair. It was kind of good news, bad news. The bad news was we only had eight attendants or attendees. The good news was we hired five or we made five offers. So it was productive from that standpoint. On January 15th, pathways to teacher certification was held. We had 190 registrations. We had about 50 individuals who came. And that was for individuals that don't have the traditional route to be a teacher, but they do have a bachelor's degree. So working with them, we hope to have them up to the point that the principals will be able to hire them in April when we do the the large job fair. So it's kind of the alternate route to to being a teacher. Coming up, January 23rd, we've got another online brazen virtual teacher and para fair. As I said, online, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And then our next operational fair. As I said, online, nine AM to eleven AM, and then our next operational fair is on February twentieth from two o'clock to five o'clock at the Wakeland Center. Uh, one brief thing, uh, food and nutrition services, uh, in the past week, uh, school gardens were planted at Bay Shore, Moody, Sammasett and Bashaw uh, elementary schools as part of the implementation of the USDA Farm to School Grant. Uh, Mrs. Beck's third grade class at Bay Shore Elementary harvested their first cucumbers. Um, the, the cucumbers were, uh, brought into the kitchen where the children, where, where they were cut up and added to ingredients to make fresh cucumber dill salad, so. Uh, the cucumber project will continue as students are now researching pickle recipes to try their next har- try for their next harvest, so.
That's fun.
Uh, that's all for operations.
That's fun.
Tell me eat the pickles without the cucumber. Any questions?
No.
Uh, real quick, how many bus drivers do we currently have?
We are, we are rostered with ninety-six, but we do have four that are on, on leave right now, so we're at ninety-two. So, those two, when they get through, we've got them, uh, already assigned to routes and everything, so we're still hovering in that ninety-four to ninety-five range right now.
And mechanics?
Uh, mechanics, we're down to five at this point right now. Um, as a matter of fact, on, uh, consent agenda, number twelve was a NASPO, um, contract that you approved, and that allows us to outsource some of our tire rotations as well as some of our roadside assistance to, uh, both the yellow fleet and the white fleet. So, uh, transportation is looking at some alternative ways to deal with the, the shortage that we have right now.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Um, legal update. I know we got some Friday, but go ahead.
Just one thing, um, somebody all asked about the status of the ASME, uh, impasse process, and, uh, it has, uh, been assigned to a special master. By Perk, so, and it's actually an out-of-state, uh, Pennsylvania attorney, I guess.
That's right.
And, uh, which is kind of unusual. Shows that their backlog didn't, they actually went out of state to get people. So anyway, hopefully it'll move faster than, than we first kinda were throwing out, so that's good.
Great.
Great.
That's it.
That's good. Alright, um, moving on to superdino remarks. Start, Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'll start what I usually do. Board members appreciate your approval of the consent agenda tonight. There were thirty-one items that allow us to move the district forward in instruction, operations and finance. Uh, thank you also to all of the directors, executive directors, deputy superintendents who, um, uh, do all of the prep work. Um, uh, as the chair noted, uh, tonight's consent agenda includes approval, um, to, uh, lease additional, um, uh, machines, uh, from, um, Evolve. Uh, that does allow us to move to, uh, the goal of daily universal screening, uh, of, uh, students, um, via touchless walkthrough, uh, detection systems. Uh, again, that technology rollout, uh, is set for August of twenty-five for next school year. Uh, can't go faster than that because there are personnel implications, um, a- and, uh, training requirements. Um, and so all of that, uh, has to be, uh, set up. Uh, we are continuing to randomly deploy Evolve, uh, at middle schools, uh, and that will continue, uh, for the rest of the year. Um, next, uh, you, uh, board, you approved, um, the start of the project, uh, to, um, put in, uh, turf fields at the last two high schools as part of the three-year project plan, so Bay Shore and Parish Community, uh, will get started, uh, later this spring and hopefully be ready in time for, uh, next August. So we're, we're excited. Uh, that is yet another project that Construction Services is managing on schedule. Uh, and then, uh, finally, uh, board members, you, you approved, uh, two, uh, out-of-state student, uh, trips this evening. Those are pretty routine. Um, w- we usually have, uh, one or two each board meeting, and, uh, I just want to, um, remind, uh, all of you, uh, and the public um, that behind all of those trips are faculty members, um, who are willing to give up nights and weekends away from their families so that these opportunities are possible for students. So thank you to all of our, um, club sponsors, uh, and, um, coaches um, who take on these trips because it's not required. Um, it's done, uh, uh, as a passion project in support of student learning. And so, uh, grateful to all of my colleagues who take on that responsibility. Um, uh, uh, board, I'll also, uh, remind you, we started the, the evening, uh, some time ago, um, with, uh, wonderful student and employee recognitions. And, um, I, I know that, uh, you all noticed that the principals of those students were here, uh, and again, they, uh, they love seeing their students recognized, and I thank all of them. They, uh, they had a very long day today, and, uh, great for them to come out to the board meeting. And then, of course, at these evening meetings, we have the color guard. It's great to see, uh, students, uh, performing that duty. And of course, there's an instructor, uh, accompanying all of those students, standing in the back of the boardroom or in the hallway, making sure that everything is perfect. Um, so again, thank you to, to those teachers. Uh, since our last meeting in December, uh, I've been out, um, visiting schools, definitely the best part of my job. Um, uh, and, uh, board members, thank you for accompanying me on those. Uh, we've been to, uh, Brayden River Elementary, Johnson K eight, Lincoln, uh, Bashaw, Mona Jane, Miller and Prine. Uh, I was recently at Mona Jane to watch, uh, student mock trial, uh, in seventh and eighth grade civics. Uh, received an invitation from, uh, two teachers to come and watch the action and, uh, very much enjoyed that as a former social studies teacher. Um, we were at Miller, uh, uh, last week, uh, and, uh, had the opportunity at the end of the visit to, uh, walk into an art classroom and, uh, sat down with some first graders and, uh, jumped into the art activity, and, uh, uh, they are much better artists than me, but I had a great time, uh, uh, spending a few minutes with them. Uh, and then, um, uh, at Prine Elementary, uh, visited, uh, a really ga- a great, uh, pre-K, uh, classroom. Uh, and, uh, the teacher in that classroom, uh, uh, was in her, uh, third year of teaching after being a paraprofessional for us for a decade and going back to school and getting that bachelor's degree, and, uh, she told me this was, she was living her dream uh, of being a pre-K teacher for the school district of Manatee County. Uh, and, uh, uh, again, that's part of the job for sure. Um, board members, on Friday, we have a workshop where we'll be presenting the results of the Math Progress Monitor two data. Uh, normally, we do those in a board meeting, but we wanted to get the graduation data out to you. Uh, the other piece is that the math data in this administration is very nuanced because of some of the methodology changes that we made. And then also because of the way the testing rolled out, we also had calendar disruptions, so we really wanna take our time with you on Friday, uh, when we walk through that presentation, and that'll be one of those where we stop on each slide and say, what questions do you have? Um, so that we make sure you have all the information, uh, to see how our students, uh, are doing. We went through all of that data today, uh, with, uh, our, uh, K through twelve principals. Uh, and, uh, my message to them is that today was day one of a nineteen-day uninterrupted window of instruction, nineteen days from now until President's Day. It's one of the last uninterrupted blocks of time that we can really make significant learning growth with students and, uh, excited for how focused our principals are and, uh, the decisions they're making against student by student to determine, um, how we help students, uh, grow, uh, uh, in their learning. Uh, so we look forward to presenting all that data to you on Friday. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Um, board comments. We'll go Kenny Tatum, Felton, Spray, Cho.
Oh, okay. Uh, caught my off guard. Um, I had a quick question. I noticed, um, uh, that, well, actually, I didn't notice it. Laura, thank you, Laura, pointed it out to me when I, when I asked, but, but workshop requests and future agenda item requests are no longer on the board meeting agenda? And, um, so we just should do that through board briefing?
Yes.
Time now?
Yes.
Okay, which is fine.
Yeah.
Um, I've got a list which includes, um, the South Gym at Manatee High, although I'll get an update on that from, uh, the superintendent soon, I'm sure. And I know that project is kind of already, that horse is out of the barn, but, um, anyway, um, I'm reviving an idea from twenty-twenty-one about a solar project. Um, letterhead policy, recognition of retirements. What's our practice? What's our policy? Cause we had a couple very long-term employees on our HR document tonight. Uh, one of whom, uh, I didn't hear this from him himself, but, uh, friend of a friend said he didn't want to be recognized or mentioned at the meeting, so I didn't say anything, but we had a couple one very long-term. And then employee engagement surveys, but I'll, I'll talk to Superintendent Weisong on those. And I do wanna, uh, you know, we had a tough conversation tonight, but, um, but I, I respect everybody involved because, um, you know, I, we see things completely differently, but we can have a respectful conversation, and I very much appreciate that with some boards and some agencies that would have devolved into, um, something far worse. So, um, I, I do wanna say, you know, I believe everybody involved here is acting out of what they think are, uh, the best path forward. I don't think that anybody has any bad motives. Um, I just saw that situation differently. But, um, I, I do wanna thank the superintendent, as he mentioned, uh, the, the school trips. I, I was at Miller, I was at Prine. And Superintendent Weisong is the first superintendent I've worked with who has invited me to go on a campus visit. And I really got a lot out of just sitting in on that conversation with the admin team and then walking the hallway. And, um, so I think that's a, that's a, a really great development. Um, not just to help us get to know the schools and, and our employees better, but I, I feel like it, um, it just kinda adds a new dynamic to the board superintendent uh, relationship, which I appreciate it. That said, um, which I'd usually give thanks at the end of the meeting, so I'll leave that to you. But, uh, I do wanna thank everybody that made this meeting possible tonight and everybody that, uh, took part in presentations and public comments.
Thanks. Ms. Jacob?
Okay, I'll try to be brief, seeing the time that we have. My safety point for the day, for the month, is that it's cold out there. And it's not as cold as maybe some other places people have lived, but when you go camping, hiking, boating, those type of things, hypothermia can set in quickly, so be prepared when you go out, you know, it, it's not Florida right now that we all know and love, so. Don't, thirty, you know, thirty-one, thirty-two degrees, even forty degrees, you can be hypothermic and especially if you fall in the water or get wet or something out in the woods and you got a five-hour hike back because you were out hiking or something, you'll, you'll find yourself injured. As far as the discussion that we had on the per- last person election that we take, I, I just wanna make the point that I've worked with the people that were on the discipline committee and obviously with the superintendent for a significant number, amount of time now, and I, I, I trust their judgment in the sense of I know that they're good people who are trying to make the best decision that they could, and, and, uh, and I still trust them. And I, and I've, I think this is the, actually the first recommendation from the superintendent that I've eventually gone against. I guess there had to be one, one day, you know, but I just want them to know, those people to know that I, I know them and I trust them, and I know that they're making the best decision that they could, and, and I was very pained, because what it came down to for, for me was the interest of the school system and maintaining a proper procedure and, and, and a common procedure versus the effect that this decision was gonna have on the, this long-term employee's life. And at the very end, and actually some comments that were made by, at the end by some board members tipped the scale where I went with the effect that it was gonna have on this person's life, which was very close to the interest of the school system, but the point is that I, I just want the people and, and on the staff to know that they still have my confidence and I trust their judgment. And those are the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Felton?
Okay, I have to swap my glasses so I can read. Um, uh, first, I just wanna reiterate congratulations again to our Sunshine Scholars. They, those young ladies, um, I am just so impressed with they, the, the work that some of our kids do, um, uh, wow, just, it's amazing the things that they are able to do. I could not have done what they do when I was in high school, and I'm sometimes wondering if I could do it as an adult. Um, also, um, Ms. Diato and Ms. Bennett for their wonderful work, our, our guidance counselors are incredible, hardworking people who spend a lot of time doing other things beyond their own jobs. Um, you know, I've seen them doing testing and, and running kids around to, you know, on field trips and, and, and so many other things that are not their job, uh, precisely, and, and they still come to work every day. They're working hard for their, their students. Uh, and I, I have, uh, nothing but respect for them. Um, since we've gotten back, uh, this semester, I have been to the Soren Four monthly event at Bishop Museum. It's incredible. If any of my fellow board members have not been there, please go. You will be wowed. Uh, it was way bigger than I ever anticipated. I've gotten to go to FBLA competition, FFA competition, elementary Vex robotics competitions. Um, I am going on, uh, Wednesday to go see the pigs being judged, uh, at the fair. So if you get bored and wanna come hang out with me and see the pigs, uh, I will be there. Um, and, uh, just, this is big-time competition season. I'm gonna try and get to everything I can. Um, and, and please keep inviting us. I know all of, all of us really enjoy those things. Um, I also was one of the board members who was able to attend the MTC law enforcement graduation. Um, it was really great to see, uh, these, uh, men and women who are, uh, have all come from different walks of life, uh, coming together to, to serve our community, um, in, in a, in a thankless job. Um, really. Um, and then, um, so I've got coming up, we've got, I'm sure most of us are gonna be, if not all of us, are gonna be reading to children this coming week. I am looking forward to that. Um, that'll be a lot of fun. And, uh, and it's one of the many things that really make this job awesome is when we get to go spend time in the classrooms and, and see our kids uh, in action with our teachers. Um, and then I would also like to, to state that I do absolutely, um, struggled with today's decision. Um, I, I absolutely respect our staff and, and their viewpoints, and if I had full access to the record with regards to this case and, and, uh, I may have made a different decision, but based on what we had, I had to go with what I, what I had in front of me. Um, and that was really, really very difficult. Um, um, but, uh, I, I'm hoping we made the right decision. And, and as Mr. Tatum said, this is gonna be one that, that bothers me because I, I, I don't know. Um, but otherwise, uh, I wanna thank our staff. I know we kept you here really late tonight, uh, ladies and gentlemen, but thank you for all you do. Uh, we could not do this without you.
Thank you. Ms. Frank?
Okay, I just wanna say thank you to the staff as well and to those who are retiring. Uh, I know some don't want their name mentioned. I'm not gonna mention, but other than first name, Kimberly, twenty-eight, almost twenty-nine years dental assistant. And then, uh, Catherine, twenty-two point five, six years, and then this one is a thirty-five year.
I don't say it.
I will not. I will not. Uh, thank you to your service, who you are. You know who you are. Um, another, uh, uh, teacher for twenty-four point two-five years. And I, and another one for twenty-two years, and it goes on, uh, but that's the biggest of it. But I did notice, and I talked about this with the superintendent and during my briefing, about getting hire dates. Because if you look at our boardwork for HR, we have a lot of turnover, uh, teachers, bus aides, bus drivers. And I see on here that we have a retirement of one point six years of service. So to me, they came, decided this isn't what they wanted, and they left, but I would still like to have their initial hire date. I don't need the in and out, but I'd like to, I don't know what else the board thinks of that, but I think that would give us an idea about however many people left up here, um, number A, teacher that left Liquid Ranch, how long were they here? We don't know. So, that was a request I made at my boardwork, uh, briefing rather. Um, bus donation was made to the Dream Center. From what I understand, uh, that's something I advocated for, and I'm glad they got that. Um, Christmas was busy for everybody. Uh, for me, it was packing candy cane bags, a hundred bags with a hundred and thirty candy kings for all of our drivers. And I delivered them on Thursday. I couldn't hand them out on Friday because my husband had dental surgery, so I couldn't do that. So I'm hoping that all of the bus drivers enjoyed passing those candy kings out to their, uh, kids. Also, one of the highlights of last week was attending, uh, Ballard with Mrs. Ben Carson Candy, who was there to dedicate a reading room, which with Mrs. Ben Carson Candy, who was there to dedicate a reading room, which is absolutely fabulous. Uh, the kids seemed very engaged. It was an honor to even just talk to her. I didn't even realize that's who I was talking to until I found out that's who she is. She's just so calming. And it was just a great event. And I don't know who put us in for that, but I'm glad we got it. And it was very well received, uh, with the students. And from what I see, the board members that were there was pretty liking it a lot too. So the, don't forget the fair, as Ms. Felton and, uh, Mr. Jensen mentioned. Uh, I saw Mr. Edwards leaving and he set up the fair, a booth at the fair in the veterans hall. And I asked when it was coming. I said, when it warms up. I spent many a day out at that fair freezing. Uh, so I'm hoping to get out there Saturday. But thank you staff for staying so long. And again, it was a difficult subject that we discussed. And I thank the legal team for giving us, uh, directive. If someone comes up and says, hey, I want to talk to you, all you can do is listen. And that's all you can do is listen. And that's the way I'm going to approach everything when it comes to quasi judicial. You can listen. You don't have to comment. And that's where I'm going to leave it. Thank you, Chair. Great meeting.
Thanks.
You've done a great job.
Uh, staff, thank you very much, as always. Um, we get in here, we could do this for a couple hours, whatever. But it takes weeks and weeks to build this. Uh, so thank you very much to everybody involved. I do want to say a couple of things. Um, we, we've talked about a lot of stuff tonight that has to deal with relationships. From, uh, Ms. Diario, Ms. Bennett, and the relations they have with school counseling. I don't think, I mean, I, that's unbelievable that we have the, the guidance counselor and also, um, the, uh, the advocate in the district at the same time, same year. I mean, it's pretty incredible. And, and what they have to do, um, nowadays is not just, oh, you only have three social studies, you need four. Take, you know, I mean, they, they do so much more than what it used to be. And so, um, it's about relationships, the graduation rate. You know, it, it is a lo- it, it's a lot about a relationship, um, and, and making school, making sure kids are coming to school. You know, what, what problems are they having? And, and I think we sometimes maybe take for granted, at least maybe people watching, the public, if we're in here doing meetings and, oh, this and that, whatever. But at the end of the day, it's about the relationship that our staff has with kids. And, uh, which is, which is utmost important. Speaking of relationships, a lot of, a lot of that, we, Dr. Weisong and I today, Qualens, we're talking about, we're already in, ending winter sports and a lot of things are happening, playoffs, et cetera. I do know the girls', um, uh, districts are this weekend. Last weekend was the, the counties, which every county in the school participated. Um, every county, every school in the county participated last week. Um, and my daughter lifts, so it's a fun time. Long, uh, but it's, it's good. Um, and so, um, I can't believe we're fair season, we're already almost at the end of January. It seemed like Thanksgiving was yesterday.
Tennis is coming up.
Yeah. So, um, Ben Carson was great. Again, relationships, how that happened by relationships. Somebody talking with somebody, how that, that's, that's how that happens. And so, um, I'm excited about that. I, I don't think that's going to be the last one in our, um, in our district. I'm excited for that future as well. Other than that, um, it was great seeing Ms. Sellers at a, at a hockey game, uh, over the break. Uh, that was great. Uh, maybe again sometime. Uh, with that, we are, we'll see everybody Friday. Everybody have a good rest of the week. We are adjourned.